I'd like to call to order the Shakopee School District's School Board Business Meeting for October 6, 2025. If you need to, please do the roll.
Ziver?
Here.
Valdez?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Aldrich?
Finally, here.
Johnson?
Here.
Brophy?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
And Shaw?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Evening, everybody, and welcome. First on our agenda is always our favorite part of the meeting is our Saber Pride. And tonight we have a couple items. First is item 3.1, our 2026 National American Commended Students. And you can see we have them up on the screen there is Avi. Avi's been selected as the Shakopee High School's 2026 Commended Student. Roughly 34,000 commended students nationwide and placed in the top 50,000 of students who apply for National American Scholarships. So we want to recognize Avi and congratulate him. Next on Saber Pride is item 3.2, National Principals Month. And our Assistant Superintendent Jim LaFalcic will present.
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. I have the honor of not only supervising but working with all 10 of our building leaders. We have two of our principals and one of our assistant principals here tonight. And I just, I can't say enough positive things about them. I mean, they truly are the heartbeat of our schools. You know, they have that unique job of balancing and supporting our students, our teachers, our parents, and also being a positive face in our community. And again, you know, this is a tireless job. They're often the first people in the building and often the last to leave. I was just over at the high school and I saw Mr. Policki's car still parked there at 5 o'clock. You know, and then, and then from there, we ask them to lead with vision. And you look at where we're heading with literacy, you look at where we're heading with assessment for learning. And each one of our leaders is constantly working with their staff to move these initiatives forward and to make our schools better. So we have a wonderful group of leaders. They are truly student-centered and student-focused. And I can't say enough positive things about them. And I'm excited to hear from a few of them tonight. So I thank our principals this National Principals Month.
Thank you.
Chair Smith, if I could, I know Valdez and we, Mr. Johnson, have photos of those that are in the audience here that you could show. They're able to get it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item four, the consideration of the agenda is presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion by Aldrich and a second by Brophy. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. The sign-up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to the meeting. No one has signed up for public comment. Prior to the meeting, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Next on our agenda is item six, consent agenda. You can see we have personnel items, meeting minutes, bills and authorizations, and wires report.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion by Aldrich and a second by Johnson. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next is item seven, donations approval. This is a resolution. And you see the donations on the screen there.
Make a motion to approve the donations as presented.
A motion by Peterson and a second by Valdez. Any discussion? See none, Tiffany, can you do the roll, please?
Ziver?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aldrich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brophy?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next on our agenda is the information portion of our meeting. Item 8.1, Careers in Construction Month Student Learning Spotlight. And here to present is Brett Carlfold, and hopefully I said your name right, Shakopee High School teacher, and Rowan Carlson, our Shakopee High School student. Yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the board, Dr. Redmond, thank you for your time. I've got a student with me, one of our rock stars. This is Rowan Carlson. He's a senior and unfortunately not in my construction classes anymore. But you know, we take the next generation, so to speak, so even here. As far as careers in construction, just a quick overview. We throw around a number of million open jobs in construction a little bit. I think we're actually a little bit under that. At the most, the last I saw was in the high hundreds of thousands, but we're a little shy of a million. In the United States, there are many, many, many applications in construction trades that have nobody applying to them in any way, shape, or form. Many positions don't require a college degree or any kind of a licensing, license to speak of. Electricians are currently kind of oversaturated, which I know a lot of students are sort of disheartened to hear. However, plumbers and masons are in very, very high demand. Masons require absolutely no licensing to begin. That's an apprentice right out of high school. Framing and roofing are also trades that you can walk into right out of high school and make a decent living at. The housing market has a, as I'm sure you're all aware, a huge demand in homes. There's been a lot of focus lately as far as building high-density housing. And the houses that are being built and are moving in the market are unfortunately kind of either high-density or they are on kind of the big mansion scale of things. Finding starter homes right now and, and people willing to build them are, are a little scarce. Some of the, some of the major reason for that, I think, is still lingering mortgage rates, this sort of thing. But there is still growth being had in the construction industry. The big question for us at Shakopee is how do we ensure that students have opportunities in the construction careers? How do we provide handout experiences that give them a glimpse into the future of these jobs? I tell students all the time, if you come into these classes, if you come into my classroom and you discover you hate this, that's something worth knowing now, too. And what should students know versus union versus non-union paths? How do we continue to tap into all of the partnerships that we have with businesses in Shakopee and other field to continue to support these students in their, in their potential careers? While I have your attention, I'm going to jump ahead to, I think, an agenda item that you have on your list next month, I believe. We currently have an Intro to Construction class, Introduction to Construction and Manufacturing, which we are proposing to split into two separate classes. So the pink will become the red. The Intro to Construction and Introduction to Manufacturing, and then they will continue as they always have traditionally. This gives students just a little bit more time in each field, give them a little bit more preparation for them. And it also gives students a little bit of a chance to see that, to see what these fields look like a little bit more authentically while they're a little bit younger. So we're talking mostly ninth graders, 10th graders, and what have you. So we are hopefully going to do that starting next year. And just as a little glimpse as to some of the things that we've been doing this year. Unfortunately, because we took pictures early this year, I don't have much completed to show you. However, the early storage, the early buildings that we're doing with our construction classes is we're building a storage corral that will hold our dumpster, just so that it's a little bit more slightly back in the, behind our construction lab, behind the tech end wing. And we're also building a garage for our custodian forklift. So those are two of the projects that we're currently waking, working on. Students are breaking through four inches of asphalt by hand, which is always fun to watch them do. Blisters are had by all. Four inches of asphalt, we're able to get through with diamond blade saws and eventually sledgehammers when the blades aren't deep enough. We should be finishing with this project somewhere around quarter one, somewhere around the end of quarter one. If you happen to get around to the back of the high school, you'll see that we've got posts and set in concrete and the rafters are up now. So moving right along. A couple of quotes from some previous students that we've had. It's a different class than normal. I like it, it teaches you how to work. I really hope it does. Students have a construction class, punch a clock. They get a real understanding of what's going on. I try as much as humanly possible to get them to understand that, you know, the world is run by the people who show up on time and deadlines really, really matter. And another one, it's better than paperwork, you can take pride in hands-on work. It's, it's something that kids inherently understand, that idea of legacy. You know, you're leaving something behind for the people that come after you. And I think it's just phenomenal that I don't have to teach that idea. I will get out of your way and be quiet. I want to let Rowan talk. I'm going to give you this, sir. And just hit the forward earlier.
So, construction background, grew up. My dad was dry-armed for almost 20 years. Kind of learning how to work and do stuff from a young age. I was always put on helping build decks and stuff. So that was kind of my, my grow, or you know, like my background. And going into high school, I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do. And knew, like, a lot of kids kind of follow what their parents do for a career, so. Basically, I mean, I was just like, let me take, take, take the construction pathway. And so here I am. So I've learned a lot that you're not going to learn in your regular classes. You know, you're not, you're not going to learn how to frame and put, they're not going to put you up on 12-foot roofs, you know, 24-foot roofs and stuff. They're going to be filling out paperwork, so. Last year, we had a third challenge with a construction project. It involved raising a shed six inches. And so we kind of took over that, saws all the nails off of it, and then built an interior, raised the roof up. And that was super fun. So we, I learned a lot that, you know, you're not going to learn in a regular class. And these classes are super important for that. I learned a lot of problem, problem-solving skills that, you know, I'm not, women weren't anywhere else, so.
What was that, 1,000 pounds?
Yeah. Kind of sketchy sitting on there. Little fun, though, you know. Yeah. What are you interested in designing in the future? My parents are looking at a new house right now and they want to get some land and they're like, kind of the whole thing is like, you know, when we buy land, we're going to set a plot of land and let you build your house. And that's kind of what I want to do. So I want to design all of it. I'm a big CAD guy, so I like designing all my stuff. And I bought my own 3D printer and I designed all my stuff and, you know, printed out stuff. So I sell files online, I love doing, love designing stuff, and it's kind of, kind of my thing. So I just, I like the whole designing process. I think that, you know, these, these skills are something that is super important for students like us, you know, that not other, other districts aren't offering, you know. In Minnesota, it's super important, so. I had any advice for a middle school student? Just, just know that it's going to be hands-on. You're, you're not going to be sitting and filling out paperwork. This, the paperwork that you are given is important for what you're going to go and do and learn. So just kind of focus in on the paperwork that you are given and, you know, it's, it's going to be important for what you go and do more. So I just think that be, be ready to, to work with your hands and not, not work with a pencil, so.
Just a couple of our partnerships that we, that we have for our construction pathway. Obviously, the Shakopee Chamber, Scott County CDA. We are adding a new academy champion this week. I think Greystone Construction is jumping in to take the void left by the unfortunate loss of Bear. And then a list of the other partners that we work with on a semi-regular basis or an increasingly regular basis. And I want to make sure that I specifically mention both Northland Forest Products and Woes, who have been massively generous to us. And I think that's all we have. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Quick one for you, Mr. Carlfold. Curious, how many students, like ballpark-wise, did Shakopee have to participate in some of these trade classes?
Construction class, I have five sections of this year. This is the first year, it's larger than it's ever been. This is the first year I've actually had to hand one of the construction classes off to a, to a different instructor. There's, there's anxiety with that, but he's a great guy. He's more than qualified. I'm, I'm kind of a control freak, so that, that's going to take a little bit of effort. So there's five of the, and that's the second level class, the construction class. The intro class has been, I think, nine sections of 25 or so. So 125 to 150 becomes something on the order of about, oh, I would say 100. And then for my advanced class, that'll drop down to about 40 to 50 students in that year. We have two sections of that this year. I believe this is the first year we brought two sections of that. So the pathway as a whole is growing like crazy.
Just to expand on Mr. Ziver's question, by splitting into those pathways that the president will come before the board, and it seems like the right approach, we could really get design and construction. Do you see that, you know, increasing the number of students that can be served in that space by having those two additional tracks? Or splitting it into two tracks?
It's possible, though, that it could increase. We're sort of expecting something of either a 50/50 or a 60/40 split. We're not exactly sure which way it'll go, whether they will get heavier construction or heavier manufacturing. I've got my bias, but. The assumption is, is A, we're going to put less pressure on the woodshop with the massive amount of bench tool machines and all of that. That'll be a good thing, to have that room not used every single hour of the day. The other advantage of doing this is the, the purely dedicated introduction class for construction will be like a week of safety, a week of drywall, a week of framing, a week of plumbing, a week of electrical, just to give kids a taste of all of these different trades. So it'll be something akin of like the very beginnings of trade career exploration. And it'll also serve as something of, look, when you have your own house someday and your kids punch a hole in the drywall, now you know how to fix it.
Practical application.
Not that any of us have ever had that happen. Yeah. Is that answered your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks, Rowan. Good job. Next on our agenda is item 8.2, the ninth grade day one report. I'm here to present is Stephanie Wheelock, our ninth grade academy principal, and Jeff Policki, our Shakopee High School principal.
Hi, thank you so much for having us back to talk about the ninth grade first day. I can go a little bit long, so if somebody and I start talking too much, somebody just tell me we can go forward.
I'll be your timekeeper.
Thank you, please. So going back to the why. This is my fourth year as the ninth grade academy lead and really thinking about that transition. I saw a lot of anxiety with kids coming in, a lot of anxiousness about the first day of school and that transition into high school. So we did, starting last year, doing some research, looking at, what can we do differently? And this is really the plan that we came up with. We kept all of our original back-to-school things and we moved our orientation to the first day of school. Which is what we did this year. Got two pictures up here. The one on the left is the gauntlet of teachers. As our ninth grade students were coming into the building this year, we had them lining the sidewalks on the way in, all the way into the cafeteria so that they could feel welcome. Lots of clapping, lots of smiles, lots of energy. And then the picture on the right is four of our 85, 86 link leaders that led our ninth graders through the orientation in the morning. So gathered a lot of information, came in front of you in May. Once you gave us permission to do this pilot, we launched into what does it look like to communicate this to teachers, to families, and, and students, to make sure everybody was on board and knew what we were doing, set up our project plan, and really worked over the summer and make sure we had everything in place. Right after September 2nd, went right into, let's get information from the students, get some information from families and teachers about how it went and how it feels now up here at school. And that's what I'm here to present to you, is what we know right now. I think we have more information we can gather over the course of the year and we'll continue to think about how we can gather that information. First day structure looks very much like what I brought you in the spring. We did that orientation in the morning, again, with the link leaders. So 10 through 12 graders came in and worked in small groups. We did group the kids into lunch sections, so they would automatically know somebody in their lunch right away. And then at midday, we had, we combined lunches so they'd have a chance to kind of run through the lunch time with a smaller number of students getting more comfortable. We also had an activities fair during that time. And our data from the activities fair, at least at the moment, is looking like we're getting a little bit of an increase in a lot of the clubs in terms of sign-ups because we got them right away. We got them registered right away. I think it was 31% of the, the club leaders responded and said, yes, we're seeing more leaders. So we were all just a little bit of an opt-in. If they weren't at lunch, they were meeting with our ninth grade counselors, our new lead, Zacha Villarreal, and me to talk about what does ninth grade look like? What's the community we're trying to build? Let's start this off on a positive note. We do a lot of hard things together. Here's your resources, here's your people, in addition to your teachers. So really making sure that they saw all of the faces and that they're going to have the kind of their support for their ninth grade. And then in the afternoon, we moved into their schedule. So they got quick 15-minute classes with a five-minute half-time time. We learned that maybe wasn't enough time, but we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then we had a big celebration at the end of the day in the gym. Lots of energy, a little bit of games, a little bit of competition, the roller coaster, of course. Just a lot of fun to really build that positive energy. And then again, we kind of clapped the students out of the gym, took them to the buses, made sure everybody knew where they were going. That first day bus situation, it looked a little bit muddy for a ninth grader. And so it was nice to just have the ninth graders and really be able to find the spot where your bus is, look for your bus driver, people that you know. So it was a nice transition. We are looking at all of the data points. We've stayed in communication with all of our stakeholders. We'll continue to gather information about how that felt for each group. This, this pilot really is giving us a chance to think about how else we can serve our ninth grade students as well. My biggest win, I think, here is that 96% of our ninth graders were there on the first day of school. And you can see the data here from the past three years. Somewhere in the kind of 50 to 58% of our students were coming to that orientation prior to this year. And this year, we have almost everybody in for that first day of school. So really a good chance to get grounded as a group and really feel that ninth grade energy very familiar beginning. One of our other big wins here is that ninth graders have their MacBook that's ready to go for that first day of school. I think we only had four students that had to pick them up on Wednesday morning, which means they started that first day of school ready to go with all of their materials. In previous years, it were between 60 to 70 ninth graders that didn't have their computers, which it takes a long time to get them up and running. So really felt like it was a big time to save them for that phase. Also noticed that their ninth grade students were down in the first day of school compared to last year. Kind of cool as well. I did provide some information here. If you click in, there's information more specifically about student feedback as well as staff feedback. In general, we heard from the ninth graders that they felt like they belonged at school, they knew where to go, they knew what the resources were, and they really felt positive about that first day of school experience. And staff felt the same way as well. The purpose question, do you think the students felt welcomed, valued and connected? Everyone agreed that that first day set them off on that positive note. And we're hearing a lot of anecdotal evidence that really felt, feels good, that the ninth graders know what they're doing, where they're going, they're coming to school. And we surveyed, oops, this is some quotes. Even, I highlighted a few general comments, like confidence and engaged. Lots of things about anxiety coming from people's that first day. Family feedback. In general, I think we always want to get all kinds of feedback. We have a little bit of a gap here with students that we would really like to hear from their families. That's pretty typical. There are very engaged families that answered this survey. So we're feeling like we need to dig in a little bit more and how else can we get the voices of the families who don't generally engage in school about what they're, what they would like for the ninth graders' first day experience. But we did get some very positive feedback. There were a few people who were still looking for that more traditional approach, but in general, people felt like it really brought down anxiety and created that social emotional environment that was positive for the ninth graders. And here's a, a pop overall, very positive from families. Would you recommend that structure? 85% said yes. We did get a few ideas. These are just a couple of elements that we're thinking about. We've learned a lot about asynchronous learning. We do want to probably extend those class periods a little bit longer to build that relationship piece a little bit more deeply. But we learned a lot and we're excited to bring this to you to kind of tell you where we are now and we'll continue to gather information. I'll show you, here is the class of 2029. At the end of our celebration, at the end of the day, we have them all gathered together to see the picture. And I'll pause here to see if you have any questions.
Well, you know, before we do that, I just, you know, just kudos to Ms. Wheelock and, and, you know, and to Zach for just the whole team for, for putting this day together. As a community member, you know, I'm not a parent anymore than this, but I'm, I'm an uncle now. And, and, you know, I've got a niece and a nephew in ninth grade. So just in the circles of, just within family and then just all the people that I know in the community. It was either, you know, met with, boy, that was great, do that again, just the anxiety level that Stephanie talked about, that was a recurring theme. And then the people that I do know that, right, we all have kids that have graduated, always started with, oh, I wish we would have. Right, I heard that numerous times. And so really the data that was presented just really enforces more of the anecdotal, just, you know, conversation at a volleyball game or just something like that, just was reinforced, you know, that, that positive sentiment. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of great work and, and like Steph said, a lot of things that we can learn from and just to enhance the experience moving forward. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions.
Chair, I'm late. And we're going to tee this up, so that our student school board members also get a chance to respond of that, oh, I wish I would have kind of conversation. I, I mean, I remember when my, you know, my youngest was, you know, a freshman in the break, she's going to get lost in the building, right? So all of that, you know, from the anxiety, I see that. For those students that led those link groups that had 11, 12 graders, did you solicit their feedback as well? Or some of the messaging that they were hearing is part of the wall picture?
I do have that. I don't have as much. I haven't had as much of a chance to dig into that, but I think that response rate was a little bit more or so. You're going to have to circle back around to get a little more detail there. Yes, we can get that.
Almost like that, I'll call it peer-to-peer learning experience, but like when you have upperclassmen and you're kind of measuring and, you know, helping that, the new generation of the class come through, I think there's good things that come from that. That's what I was asking, to get the, the feedback from those who participated as those new leaders. And then from a student school board perspective, if you can flashback to when you were in ninth grade, would you have liked to have had this experience? Or what are, what are your thoughts?
When I was in ninth grade at my link leaders, I actually started to admire them the first couple of years and then, and then, it was really cool because we stayed in touch all the time. I probably will love this day as well. And I agree with the students, just really, I think, if not this year, then starting from next year would be, it would be really the idea to be tapping to me and quote from the news and see what I think. Because if you say a link leader from last year could talk, or, oh, this student did not jump back to me after a week meeting, but then they could say something like, oh, this year I did have a couple of freshmen soon as reached back out to me and talked to me, sat together at lunch or something. I think you can see their differences and see the difference, see the difference.
Yeah, but also from my experience, in freshman year, I was a really timid kid. Like, I would not be up here right now in my freshman year. So first, to start, I didn't go to that freshman orientation in between, I guess, open house and the, the first day of school. So I think if I actually, I was too scared. But if I had this, I would definitely, my parents would make me go. I think it would really acclimate me to the high school as well, because the first day, not to put myself on blast, but I didn't eat lunch either because I didn't know how to work the, like, the lunch line. So I was just there trying to find my friends. So yeah, I, I think I'd really benefit from this. And also to the freshmen who are kind of feeling a bit timid, feeling a bit shy, and just scared for the future. I mean, this is a perfect way to set them up for high school. But also another thing for the 10 through 12th grade, 12, 10 through 12th graders for that asynchronous day. I know you already highlighted how it could be a bit more structured, a bit more. I know you already highlighted how it could be a bit more structured and a bit more purposeful and impactful. And I was just wondering if you had any ideas for that? Because I know just from my friends that they didn't really do much that day and the teachers kind of realized that, hey, like, happy you did it, happy you didn't for like the work that they assigned, so.
We did have a couple of teachers that really did get that engagement piece, and I think that's where I would want to start. It's like, what did you do differently from other teachers who maybe were done assigning on canvas and didn't engage as much? So I do, that's one thing I really need to dig into. Like, if you got great, great response rates, what did you do? So I do definitely think we need to start there. Would that have worked well? Because I had, I have one quote on there from a teacher who was like, wow, I got so much engagement and I was able to set up my class that first day because I knew so much about my students already. And I need to figure out what that was that you did, so we can share that for sure going forward. Yeah, totally. Thanks for highlighting that.
I did have a follow-up question then. So are all the upper-class teachers also involved in freshman year? Like, do they have to be helping students that are already sitting in the classroom?
They, I forgot to mention that. So I had throughout the day, we had scheduled teachers in the hallways. So we made sure somebody was available and visible at all times if students were having a hard time. We had a call room set up so that if somebody, we could kind of come down and take a break. We could, we had staff around to walk them there. During every passing period, every class period, we had, everybody was out in the hallway welcoming students. Do you know where you need to go as, you know, answering all those questions? So staff were highly engaged, especially for that afternoon section. And we did have people at lunch too, Brian, and so they would have been there to say, you know, students, you don't have lunch? Do you want to come with me and I'll take you through the line and show you how to do that? So I made sure I have some really warm, welcoming, for various teachers at lunch. We wouldn't be afraid to kind of scoop up some kids. We even had some games and some questions up on tables, just in case somebody wanted to use them, not that any ninth grader would. They probably use them, but some teachers might have wanted to. So we really worked at engaging the teachers. And I think, to me, that was a big win because then I think the teachers saw the process and they really saw how much the ninth graders were taking out of it because they could see that they were asking the question that they now needed.
Thank you very much.
Well, I can share. So the eleventh grade moms in my social circle, I will say, were skeptical. I don't think they were doing their best at putting themselves in the shoes of an incoming ninth grader. They were more like, what's this now really day of school for my kid? So I did my best to defend the little things, you know, it was like, well, you didn't hear what was presented. But anyway, yeah, so I guess if there's like maybe some more, just a little bit of feedback there, maybe some more for those families to understand, like, what this is about, what's the benefit of them having a asynchronous day for the first day?
Well, and, and you know, you, you look at it as a principle, you know, there's, there's a part of you that would want, right? It's the first day of school, it's if you want, I want everybody to feel like, I want to be at school, right? We want to be there. So we all, we all acknowledge that when we get that, right? So we're definitely looking at something that we have shared a lot of information of, just, right? We get that as, as school people, right? That ninth grade year, all of those important things that we've talked about. So yeah, so you're doing this as, how, how do we get better at, we were talking about our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders of, of making that a robust, you know, engaging, meaningful day? Knowing, knowing that you already have the cards stacked against you a little bit, because we do want kids to be there. And of course, on that next day, that they're gonna be there. But that, that's an area for us to, and, and we knew, we knew that going into it, that that was gonna be an area of, of growth as we are working really hard to get the ninth graders up and running. And I think we've got a really good template. Now, what do we get that further, right? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Next, our agenda side of game point three, maximizing learning and efficient use of time in elementary schools. And here present is Nikas Summer, our assistant director of learning, teaching, equity, and Stephanie Baker, our Eagle Creek elementary principal.
Hi, Rhiel Lyne. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are excited to be back with you and kind of giving some updates to the work that we started last spring. If you remember, this was kind of our, our outcome. Our goal when we started all of this was to really align our five schools to create one system, focusing on that guaranteed and viable curriculum and creating structures within the day to better support student learning with that idea of maximizing our learning time for students. Some of the key shifts that we're here to give you updates on tonight are our foundational skills, our win time, our STEM specialists, and then our programming shifts for gifted and enrichment services.
Great, so this, we wanted to show you a master schedule. Don't get dizzy. So this is last year's schedule, and we really wanted to put this in here just to outline that when, as you can see, in between the different grade level schedules was seen as more of like an afterthought, or I don't even know that all the schools called it when. It was the time that we put in dedicated for students who had special education services to be pulled out at that time. And so it is staggered in our schedule last year, but the contrast to that would be this year's schedule, where every single grade level has a what I need win time in its schedule. And what that allows is every service, student support service provider, including special education, English language teachers, and interventionists also are available at that time to, for lack of a better word, flood that grade level to pull groups and give every student what they need. And we're gonna go into detail a little bit more about what I need time. But I just wanted to show you when every single one of us created our schedules, starting in the spring of last year, we put that dedicated win time in and we ensured that it was staggered, so none of them overlapped. And then this is just, I know I introduced you the ten-day schedule. This is the, the four-day schedule at Eagle Creek. And it just shows that, for example, Susie Springer has STEM on day one. She has art on day two. She has Viad on day three, and she has music on day four. And this is the first time that I can walk around and say to a student, what specialty do you have today? And they say, what day is it? I say, it's day three. And they say, music, which was really impossible last year with the ten, ten-day rotation. So as you can see, Eagle Creek has twenty-eight sections. So for three of, three mornings, we have a traveling specialist that comes home over, comes over from Red Oak to teach a second grade class, a fourth grade class, and a kindergarten class. And it's going out really well. In Viad, they just team teach, so they open up the gym and they teach together. And the other three classes have their own space, and so that's been going out really well. It's been really great to have those teachers over there.
Foundational literacy skills. So we rolled out our comprehensive literacy framework, I believe, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I think it's, it's brought us to this point now where we are really thinking about the time, the talent, the treasures of our teachers and our resources, and they, maximizing that tier-one instruction for all students. So last spring, you approved our resources of UFLI and ninety-five phonics. And we have been really excited to see teachers implementing these resources and hearing feedback. Yes, it's been, it's been hard because anytime you're changing curriculum and instruction, it's taxing on teachers. But the results that they're already seeing, the conversations we're hearing kids have about syllables and where they put their, their syllable marks and their little hand gestures has just been really exciting. So when we think about maximizing learning time, this foundational skills block, these thirty minutes that we have now put on all the master schedules are really, really critical for our students. Some of the ways that we're supporting the shifts is through PLC coaching. So we have three learning, teaching, and equity coaches that support PLCs across the district. There's four PLC mediums in quarter one, and our goal is really to understand, what do we mean to implement this resource with fidelity and integrity? How do we align our pacing and the lesson components? And then working with teachers on their, the self-reflection of the delivery, student engagement, and student data. After quarter one, we'll shift those supports to one-on-one classroom coaching, which I am really excited about because this is where I think teachers can self-reflect and set their own personal goals for this implementation. And we will support them in that process. Again, that whole goal of maximizing those thirty minutes very intentionally for that high-quality tier-one instruction.
And if you look back, sorry, if you go back to the master schedule, that also is a place where we've identified foundational skills time. So every single grade level has a foundational skills block. And the same thing, we can have interventionists there supporting that, English language teachers supporting that, and special education. So that's been really fun to see as the, as the students are learning those, those routines with foundational skills too. Because before, it was just all in the language arts block, and so it wasn't necessarily dedicated this time. So I'm excited in the next couple of years, as the kids move through. We had a couple of grade levels that piloted it last year, and even those grade levels, the teachers are like, wow, these kids are already doing, they're teaching me the hand signals. They, they're excited to be repeating and going through because it's a very structured process that they go through. All right, so win time. One thing that was really exciting also about win time is system-wide, all elementaries agreed on doing our data dive right when Fastbridge, our benchmark Fastbridge test were done. Every, every grade level did a data dive and looked at the results and decided that we are going to start what I need time on September twenty-second. And that was, it was a big ask because it was, it was a very quick turnaround. However, at the same time, sometimes we didn't know when some of those student support, support service providers started, or there wasn't necessarily an expectation that they all started at a certain time. And so this just made it so that every single student at win time was getting what they needed by a student support service provider or a general education teacher on the twenty-second. This gave us, if you look at it, five hundred and ten more instructional minutes focused on the interventions or instructional matches for the students.
And that five hundred and ten is calculated to a sliding start date in the past, where because we didn't have those blocks of time and we didn't have those schedules, I'll, I'll use English language development teachers as an example. They had to navigate, you know, with all the different classroom teachers to figure out when they could work with kids, what that, what that time would be. And so there was sometimes services not starting until around MEA. So we were pretty excited about this, starting on nine, nine twenty-two. And that goal, again, is just really focused alignment, high-quality tier-one. Tier-two would be enrichment and intervention, and then tier-three is intensified intervention supports for students.
This is a screenshot from Fastbridge, when the teachers look at their data and identify, it's very, there's, it's laid out for them. I think this is the third year that we've done it. So they're really good and good at looking at the data of their whole grade level, looking at the data of their classroom, identifying different instructional matches or different interventions that specific students need. And when we did this data dive, then we met with the PLCs and we, we divvied up the students. And so in the past, I'd have my class of twenty-five students, and I knew that this many students would go with special education providers. And then maybe my interventionists would take a couple of students here, and then I'd have the rest of them. And I have to decide how I was gonna differentiate for the remaining students in my class. This year, as a team, collective efficacy, we all looked at our students and we had at least ten, I want to say ten to eleven certified staff that were available at each grade level to say, okay, I'm a special education teacher, here's the students that I'm in hold during further reading minutes at this time. Here's my two interventionists, we're gonna take the students that have the, that don't have an IEP but have a really high reading need. Here's some ELD teachers, I'm gonna take students that I know, but I'm also gonna take a couple more. And then the classroom teachers, the general and teachers would be like, okay, we have at the grades three, four, or two, four and five, three, four, five, our gifted teacher is able to take a bunch of students. And then you're left with the general and teachers, okay, I'm gonna take this group that is necessarily not going with the gifted teacher, but above grade level, and I'm gonna do book clubs. I'm gonna take this group and I'm gonna focus on fluency. I'm gonna take this group and we're gonna do comprehension. And so it, it really is, it was exciting. The kids are like, where am I going? I'm going to a different teacher. And it was, it was, it's a change. And so we're excited to keep moving forward and getting feedback, but I'm really excited about it because I do believe that each student's getting what they need. I'm excited.
And then STEM. I think our STEM teachers worked really, really hard this summer to design their curriculum. And I think the, the one thing I want to highlight is they have taken an integrated approach. So they are working really hard to maximize those skills that kids are building in math, for example, with those vertical white spaces. They're bringing that into STEM and they're having kids showcase work and thinking. They're doing the noticing and the wondering with their students in their lessons. So it's been exciting to see how they are taking what happens in those classes and connecting to this specialist area in particular. I wanted to just give you kind of an overview of what they're doing. So they took a year at a glance and they're creating kind of themes by quarter. So the first quarter is really about launching into learning. And they are really doing that through fun and engaging tools. So they started with Legos. I think the first day, we, we had some pictures we showed of kids building their own personal creations and collaborating and talking about that with each other. So they're very much building their routines and their community through these fun and engaging tools. Quarter two, we are gonna be focused on engineering by design. And this, this structure, quarter two and then quarter four, you'll see, we really took feedback from our secondary, our six-twelve PLTW teachers and our academies' teachers on what, if, if we could do something in elementary that would set kids up for six-five, six-twelve, what would that be? And we heard over and over iterative design process, iterative design process. So quarter two is gonna be a unit, and they are going to go through that iterative design process through a specific lens. Quarter three will be all about mission code possible. So they will be doing, oh! Yes, that's what they will be doing. They will do mission to possible codes. And they will work on, that was in there, oops. They will work on digital.
Sorry.
Digital citizenship. Hey, there you go, it's so fun. We have theme songs that quarter, so. And then quarter four, they will come back to those design challenges. It won't be in a unit like quarter two, but it will be that iterative design process through fun and engaging ways. So I know I've been in a couple of STEM classrooms. I've been really impressed with not only the, the teachers, but the students. And the students are taking to this with excitement, I would say. If you walk in there, they will tell you everything they are doing. They are so excited to share. So I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, I was thinking about when Roan was talking, just, just today, I was in a second grade class. They were building, I wish I could just show you the pictures. They were building a, a ramp for a little ball to go down and, and ring a bell. And they were, they were really intricate, it would be a little second grade, and they were working together and they were super excited and just, yeah. You should come over, I welcome you to come over and visit.
And then our gifted education services. So we did do some things over the summer here as well. We did change our name, so we are shifted away from high potential to gifted and enrichment services. We, we really felt that it was critical that we view ourselves as part of that multi-curated system of supports. So that we are providing some tier-two, kind of opt-in, enrichment for all, and then some tier-three supports with those gifted ed teachers. We have identified a systematic process for services, and we have the same services at every site. So in the past, really, the, the service is dependent upon that master schedule. So sometimes there was an open block and we didn't have any way to fill it, so we put gifted services in kindergarten. And now we have very intentional blocks of time on that master schedule at every site. So we have consistent win enrichment for literacy, three, four, five, at every building. And we have targeted math enrichment for grades three, four, and five at every site. And we have accelerated math in grades four and five at every site. And we have accelerated math in grades four and five at every site. We also have a little time each day where our gifted education teachers have Tier Three time. So if we have some, some students K-two with some unique learning needs, they have an opportunity to observe or support that teacher or even that student in a one-on-one type intervention, not daily, but consistently providing that extra support for students. So again, really working to maximize our time with our students in these changes that we have put into place this fall.
I have a couple of thoughts actually, slash questions. I don't know if you remember, but last year we showed that our biggest concerns with the STEM switch was we didn't really know what STEM, what the category of STEM is subject to some people. Is it about coding classes for kindergarten classes? Is it going outside of being, being in nature? So I really appreciate the breakdown quarter by quarter. My question is, is this the same for all grades? Kindergarten to fifth grade, like for everyone, quarter one would be about these units and quarter, or would be about these units?
Yes, not the same lesson, but the same quarter themes.
And in terms of gifted services, so when you say there are all ten for families, does that mean, say, a family in secondary decides, well, you're to test for a gifted services and.
No, so we use our, our data here that we collect through our FastBridge assessments, through our grade level assessments, through our COVAT testing that we do to identify students. We have some cut scores specifically in the quantitative area for COVAT testing for accelerated math. I'll just go there because we contact. So that fourth and fifth grade math is accelerated a year and a half in one year, and then they do fifth and sixth grade math in fifth grade. The enrichment, we're doing kind of a unit-by-unit pre-assessment. So the gifted team develops some pre-assessments, they work with those classroom teachers and the PLCs, they give that assessment, then they shuffle up the groups depending on who needs that little boost, and they will change those unit by unit. So in grades three, four, and five, they pre-assess with the whole grade level, they make their groups, and then they switch it each unit.
So how many students are in this unit?
That's a great question. I don't have a count right now, I can get that for you. I don't know.
I mean, my concern is like, I, like, if it is based on FastBridge testing, I think that's good because parents have to like opt into the service, like maybe we're never going to access those students, they're going to challenge them, so that's a difference in a way. Teachers are learning, are a longer-term skill.
Yes.
Just have a couple of comments, I guess. Feedback, I think hearing from teachers specifically have been really, really positive for this. Chaos has gone, I think is what one person told me, so, so that was good to hear. But I guess I have one question for you. Is there something so far in the first month of school that you didn't anticipate or didn't think about with the implementation of this new master schedule across all of our elementary schools? And is there something that's risen to the top where you're like, oh, I wish we would have bothered that? Or maybe it's too early to tell.
There, well, band, band has been a little bit of a, I wouldn't say, it, it's been, it's a new model, right? So we do have one excellent band teacher and she's at five different buildings. And so that's a new way to look at how we're going to have, provide band services to our fifth graders. So she comes to our school and one day a week and pulls students out for band all day. So that's just something that we're hoping to provide, to get feedback from the fifth grade teachers. As far as win time, I mean, it did, it was a quick turnaround and, but I really think it's beneficial to kids, at my core. And I was, I had to clarify, teachers, like, you don't have to like be the next day teaching reading intervention right away, like, get to know them, do a developmental designs game, you know, like, let's bring them to your room. So I don't, I still think that, that turnaround, even though it was quick, was still a good thing.
Yeah, I think we, we've taken some time in PLCs on Mondays to reflect on what do we wish we would have known, and some of the things that, we were very intentional about scheduling the accelerated math, we were very intentional about scheduling the staggered win times, and then we kind of plugged in some things, right? Theme or foundational skills. And so I know that today we were talking about being more intentional with which foundational skills we schedule, so that if we needed more service providers in first grade, we had more service providers intentionally versus just like, oh, it's nice, we have this, this overlap here. So I think that's something that we'll definitely want to keep in mind for next year when we build those schedules. I think it's been a big shift for special education services as well, to, to change the model, you know, where we have more teachers available versus just working with case management, that's been a shift. So we want to really think through that when we're, we're working on schedules next year. Communication is always something that we can get better at, you know, just being really clear about timelines and what, what's happening when.
Yeah, I mean, little tweaks on, like, sometimes we put on the schedule that they're going to start win time at twelve oh five, at least on the lunch at twelve oh five. Well, unless you transport them there and you have little ones that takes five minutes to walk through and wash your hands and stop at the restrooms, and so things like that when we create the schedule next, next year will.
When you said principal, the PLC in Monday, you're talking to the principal.
Oh, sorry, yes. Elementary principals have done some reflecting on that, we have, yeah.
I just wanted to expand on the band thing. How are we going to measure the success of what we're doing with the band right now with the traveling band instructor going to all the elementary schools? And if that isn't working to the way that we thought it was going to work, what options do we have? And I know that's probably down the road, but I just want to be mindful of, of the music program because that obviously is an important feeder into our middle and high school. So I want to make sure that that doesn't get overwhelmed and that it's working as best as it can.
I will say a positive is she can take as many students. And so we have sixty-seven students that are doing band at, at Eagle Creek, I'm not sure about some of the other grade levels. And kids have already changed instruments. So even that is an improvement because last year it was, here's, here's the set number of students and we don't, like, if you have sixty-seven, that's thirty, thirty, over thirty students in each class with, when it was in the specialist group. And then it was harder to change instruments. And it was also harder to drop, like, if it wasn't working for you because we already had set our specialist schedules. So that's a positive. And she's very, very like, like, at least with me too, like, a lot of communication back and forth on what's working, what she needs, and so that's a positive. And when I say, when I said that, it came to mind because it was kind of a, this is a big shift, having it all on one day. But I don't necessarily think it's the only way to do it, thinking about other districts and the way that they've done things and so.
Good news, we have more tuba players than we had in the past, so we had a request for more tubas, so.
Well, with anything, right?
Yeah.
You test it out and you modify and test and pivot forward and make sure that it's working for everybody. Like, this, I know music is important to a lot of people, but we want to make sure we continue that in our district because we need, we need the young kids in our music program to fill our, our high school program.
And I, I appreciate you asking that. I think we can ask, you know, our, our band teachers and we can ask our students and we can ask our parents for feedback on this to see, and teachers, right, to see what, what the impact of the change has been.
I absolutely am excited because she, being one person, has decided to do these combined concerts at, I believe, West.
Yeah.
Which is, I just think so much exciting, so much more exciting for students to be on a stage versus in the gymnasium where, where it's hard to see, and so it's an actual performance, and I think that will be really exciting for students to perform.
So there was a concern floating on some teachers and staff members at school that I was, who I was talking to about media time?
About what?
Media time, going to the library or the library complex. And I don't know if the validity of this, but is, is it built into the schedule for kids to go to the library and check out books and everything? Or is that something that an English teacher, a reading teacher do in media time? It would be their responsibility for the kids to do that.
Teachers did sign up for their media time, but they did that last year too because it was just once every ten days, so they, they signed up their classes. That, that process stayed pretty much the same.
Some of the class, some of the media classes had it during media.
Sure.
Right? And now, I would argue now it's more consistent, like, every Wednesday we go at, at eight-thirty. And, and they, yeah, I've seen lots of kids still go and check out books and, yeah.
Is that pulled out of the specialist rotation then?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, not during the special.
And I, I think an exciting thing this month, our Katie Holm is our district by business specialist, and she is offering opt-in book clubs over lunch with kids, so they can opt in, any, any student. I think we're starting grades three, four, and five for that, just to get, get it going and see what the turnout looks like. She's still doing all the promotions, she's coordinating those media affairs and making sure those spaces are engaging and supportive of student learning. So, yeah, we're excited about that, just doing the book fairies, yeah.
A couple more, yeah. You know, we, we discussed that there's no perfect schedule in this, in this room extensively this year, and just some of the early feedback from the first month of this essentially, right, is, and I don't know Stephanie, if you have any, any blocks that have five and six classrooms in them that essentially, if I understand this right, we're taking those two extra or one extra classrooms, dividing those students out into those four seconds. So some of these specialists are having thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three students in kindergarten, first grade, trying to do STEM, you know, that, that's been an early challenge that could lead to teacher burnout and other challenges as the, as the year goes on. Have you seen any of that or is that been a, or any feedback?
At my side, if you go, well, go back to the schedule, it worked out perfectly with Red Oak because I had twenty-seven sections and she was, had twenty-one, to have that one teacher. So her fia teacher, her music teacher, her art teacher and STEM teacher come over in the mornings to make, round them out to be a one-point-oh. And then I had a twenty-eighth class, and so then I took first grade because I had low class sizes, and I decided to compact them, which is what you were talking about, and it doesn't put them at really large class sizes. So that's where that red line is. Kathy Johnson's class, she just took her class and four of them went in each class, or five of them went to each class, foster, parent, post, and pos. If, if I would have taken, and I'm not saying that any of other principals did this because I know that they had some shifting class sizes at the, towards the end of the summer, but a different grade level, for example, would have had, resulted in larger class sizes. So I think one of the things that we should be looking at or thinking about next year is how can we combine to have traveling specialists? Because this traveling schedule is not nearly as chaotic as it was when we had a ten-day schedule. And it, I'm lucky because it's a point-five mile away for these three teachers, but she knows that Molly Gallagher, my STEM teacher, knows she's coming every day one to Eagle Creek just for the morning. And so I think if we think about that next spring, about how Jackson and Twingy could combine and have some more traveling specialists, I still don't think it would be, it'd be as much as it was with the ten-day schedule, that would be a possible solution in the future.
Yeah, and, you know, the good news is those larger blocks are going to continue now, right?
Yeah.
Year after year, so you can adjust on the fly on that. Another question I had on win time, specifically for like kids that are already getting interventions or maybe even some of the higher achievement classes, are they getting additional, are they pulling them out of interventions to do this win time? Or is that they're still getting interventions and they're still getting win time? How does that look for those students?
They're getting their intervention during win time.
During? So we're, the only, the main difference and shift in this is that we're kind of instead of separating really from the classroom and interventionists to adding like three layers of, because your Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three students, they're.
Yes.
That's the big shift.
I think I'm understanding your question. Yes, I think when you look at that multi-tiered system of supports, you increase that intensity for like a Tier Three intervention in a couple of ways. One is reducing the number of kids that are with that teacher during that time so they can get more immediate attention and feedback. Or you increase the, the, the time that they're seen. So if we think about a teacher who might right now have thirty kids that are on track, they may be on two times a week their book club meets with the teacher. In an intervention, three-on-one, they're going to see that person every day. So it's, it's, they're getting their intervention during win and we're increasing that intensity with lowering that group size and making sure that it's daily. Is that, is that, okay, so, yeah.
I just had a clarifying question for the gifted and enrichment services, is that provided during the win time?
Yes, part, part of it, for literacy, for reading.
So just literacy for win time?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to understand of the new curriculum because when I was in elementary, the, I guess, high potential was whenever I had math, I would go during math, whenever I had English, I'd go during English, and it's just, I'm just trying to get used to all of this.
You're right. So they, they provide grades three, four, and five, they'll do literacy enrichment during win, and those same teachers will do math enrichment during targeted math time on that master schedule, and they'll do accelerated math during the core. So if I go back here, so if you look at, for example, I'm just going to say fifth grade, they will do their enrichment for literacy here, they will do their accelerated math, like that Tier Three here, and they'll do enrichment math here for, for students in fifth grade. Then they're doing enrichment here, 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 so they're doing both reading and, and math throughout the day, yeah. Is that, is that, okay?
So how frequently are the win times like assessed and changed for the students?
This year, we decided every quarter in a, in an MTSS model, the suggestion with interventions is about six to eight weeks. I think some of our teachers, I do have some grade levels that have more experience with switching kids, and I think on an ongoing basis during their PLCs, they might, especially this first quarter, say, you know, it looks like Timmy could maybe, we did some fluency interventions, I've been progress monitoring, Timmy flew up, like, can you, do you want to put him here? I have teachers that have something to do that, but the official, like, let's look at our data, let's look at our progress monitoring and do some more switches, is that the quarter?
That's fantastic. So the classroom teacher has the ability to.
Yep, yes.
If their computer puts them in.
Yeah. And which is why we sent out all of that communication to families that there might be other teachers, like, your, your child might come home and talk about Mrs. Baker and during win time and probably will, and she's so bad at this. And, and this is why, and this is why, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is item eight point four, a school age care presentation, and here presents Lisa Monahan, our Director of Community Education. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Smith and Board for letting me come back and have this discussion with you again about our school age childcare study. So as usual, we're looking at our compelling vision as we look at, at this study and where we want to go with this for this next school year. So as a reminder, Shakopee Community Ed is exploring the idea of bringing school age care in-house. Currently, the YMCA provides this service, and while the program's been successful over the years, we believe it's in the best interest of our families and students and the school district to transition it to be under Shakopee Public Schools. Again, I Again, I would like to emphasize that we have appreciated our partnership with the YMCA and really want to make sure to honor that as we talk about this moving forward. And then this is also a reminder of some of the previous presentation where we talked about that there are basically only three of the fifty-four metro districts that use YMCA for their school age care. And that all of our neighboring school districts that you see listed there do run school age care underneath the Community Education and School District umbrella. And then last month, I talked about these five benefits of bringing school age care in-house. And that's just a little bit of a reminder for you to look at with what those benefits are, like aligning program with district values and our, and academic goals, to provide enrichment opportunities and academic support for students, strengthen partnerships with families, schools, and community education. Staff of the Shakopee Public School staff, which will align with district expectations of employees and provide job opportunities and to strengthen our programs through the reinvestment. So some of the questions that came up at the last board meeting or talks about what the program components were. So I thought I would just talk about that here. That we have the intention to continue the same program components that the YMCA would offer with before and after school care, keeping the same hours that they currently have of six thirty AM to six PM. And then, you know, offering the activities during that before and after care like homework and other student learning support, enrichment, and then play-based activities. We would also continue on with the non-school day and early release days, having care during those times with the same hours, having the full day care available when there is not school. And then having the, you know, on the early release days, it would be the half-day care once school is let out early. And then on those non-school days, providing field trips and themed activities. And then summer program would also continue, same type of model with the hours remaining the same, that six thirty to six with the weekly themes and project-based learning. And then that would be a lot more of the outdoor play, the enrichment, and continued academic support, and then offering the field trips and other onsite experiences, which, what I mean by that is having programs come onsite and, and do an onsite-type field trip. And then being able to offer the before and after care for targeted services, summer school, E S Y, and Kinder Camp. So just looking here is what a typical day might look like in before and after care. And I kind of broke it down by time, and I won't go through all of that. And I realize it's small to look at on the screen. But that gives you an idea of, you know, arrival time, check-in, what kind of things would kids be doing during that time. And then, you know, eventually in the morning, going to breakfast and then transitioning into classrooms. And then the after care, which is when school ends until six PM. Same type of thing, you check in, have a snack. And then the children divide up into their activities with, obviously pickup being at various different times. And then even harder to read is a typical day in the summer. But I wanted to get that in there so that you had an idea. I know a question came up about would they still be able to do field trips? And the fun things that they've been able to do at the YMCA, and the answer is yes. Every intention to have the weekly themes, which makes it fun for the kids. And then you plan your field trips and your activities around those weekly themes. And then those hours remain the same for the working families, six thirty to six. And, you know, lots, lots of planning and activities for, for the summer program. And then we would have flexible enrollment options, which are daily and weekly or monthly. Before and after care during the school year would be located at each of the sites like it is now. In the summer, currently the YMCA, they, they ship to two schools. We would intend to do the same unless our numbers were high enough or we needed to add a school. So that has been talked about in the past with the YMCA, if their numbers were higher, could they have an additional school? So we would kind of model it after what our enrollment numbers would be. And then making sure that we have that universal opportunity for all kids to participate. If there were financial barriers or things like that, we would be able to accommodate that. And then this is just, you know, the list of responsibilities that, you know, we would work together with our other departments in looking at moving forward with something like this. Each of those departments has a role in the success of moving this as an in-house program. And then our timeline again, just coming back to you today to see if you had any further questions. I know I had asked that in the wrap and I didn't receive any, so I, I don't know if you've come up with any since then, but I'm happy to, you know, answer those questions today, hoping that, you know, we'll continue through the month of November and then bring it to the board, hopefully, for an approval, approval to move forward at the November seventeenth board meeting and then get busy working on, on what that will look like.
Just two quick ones, one that just recently came up that I was a good thought, but school, our lunches during the summer program, everyone's been at YMCA, bring your own lunch. Do you think there'd be an opportunity, or does it make sense to?
Typically, typically in these programs, we do have students bring their own lunches. If we were housed in this, at the same location as targeted services, for instance, there could be opportunity to have that lunch program. But it would be something that I would have to work with food service to see if we had enough students. Would it be a possibility to offer those lunches onsite? Good question.
The last thing was more on enrollment. It's probably too early to figure this out. But is it going to be sort of an ala carte where you can pick a random number of days for the summer to sign up and for after school, or is it you got to sign up for the whole summer and you're creating the whole summer?
We would anticipate that you would be able to pick what days of need that you would have for care.
Awesome.
Yep.
I got a roll, if you can clear pot punch. Or boil mag.
We will work on that.
And, and thank you for coming, because I know I'd asked about that, call it on-demand enrollment process. I had a unique situation where I was on a short-term project but needed those services. And it was a bit of a challenge to, to do that through the program. But I also appreciate the challenge in terms of staffing and building out, you know, what that day looks like. So it's, you know, it's hard with it ups and flows, so I appreciate the effort there. On the follow-up question, because I did see the word enrichment in there, given we just saw a great presentation on win time and what that looks like. So are we working then in conjunction with those win times? Is that enrichment that they're getting, you know, throughout the school day? To ensure, ensure there's alignment with those enrichment programs, or is that a different definition?
It'll be a, a different definition. However, what we would be doing is looking at, you know, school age care would plan their own curriculum with bringing in NICA to see how could we use our curriculum that we're using? Or how, what would you like us to have in addition to what you're offering in the school day? I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah, I just see an upside to be consistent and reinforce what they just, what they're going to see if they're, you know, they're before school and then reinforce after school. And then can school board members come and build rockets too?
Yes, absolutely. And you can work it too if you want. No, that's a great question, and I think that is our intent, is to, you know, because there is a lot of excitement around the STEM activities and, and, and a lot of the things that are going on during the school day, that we'd be able to continue that for those kids that take school age care.
Thank you so much.
Two quick questions. What would be the ideal maximum of students at each school? Because you said we might have four to three.
Well, in the summer, I can tell you, I think they ran approximately, let's see, twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-three at Jackson and one hundred and eighteen. These are average numbers for the summer program. So, you know, in order to get a third school open, you'd have to have over a hundred more students involved.
What, what is the top grade level that?
Right now, the YMCA offers it through fifth grade.
Would we offer it through sixth or seventh?
I have heard that that is a need of our families, that they would like it to continue as their... So they, I don't believe that they do through sixth grade that they used to. And we would, we would hope to be able to offer it through sixth grade, at least in the summer. I don't know that there's that need for after-school care at the, you know, at the middle school level. There's, there's opportunity in the future, I think, to look at what could a before and after-school program look at the middle, like at the middle school level. I think right now, we're going to focus at the elementary level. And then, you know, like you said, opportunities coming up could be middle school.
I just have one quick question in regards to, I like the flexibility piece on what days we use the service. But I would think there would have to be some sort of a commitment. Otherwise, you're going to have an administrative nightmare trying to figure out if you have three schools, you have three hundred and fifty, four hundred kids in this program. I mean, they could become in a whole bunch of different ways, right?
Yes.
I mean, how do you track that?
So usually what you do is the parent will sign up a month in advance. So that you pick your days a month in advance, so that you've got the schedule, so you know how to staff it. And that would be typical for summer as well.
And then it's on the staffing piece, so it sounds like there's opportunity to, for current workers in the district to also do this. And, you know, I think paras were a suggestion, it sounds like a good fit. And there's possibility if like a part-time person who did this picked up enough hours could become a full-time employee in the district, just working, just wearing a lot of hats. I guess, I guess your district permanent license. I have a question.
I think in relation to that too, there has been, I think, a question that has come up, like, obviously, our intent is, is not for people to lose jobs in this situation. And they're going to be YMCA staff that would be welcome to apply, you know, if this does move forward. And, and certainly, they could stay with the YMCA as well. So, but I know, I've heard that, would, would they be able to, you know, possibly get a job and, and the answer would be, yes, absolutely, they could apply.
Kind of on the student perspective, I remember last time at the last meeting, you talked about how you could have, create certain connections with the Human Services Academy and have employment and volunteer opportunities. Are those conversations in the works right now, or is it kind of up in the air?
We have not started those conversations because we need to wait for approval before we move forward with those. But those would be most definitely conversations. And that is something that high school students are needed in a program like this to be working. So, both before and after school, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is item eight point five, camera project update. And here presented is Brian Grosso, our Director of Instructional Technology. Welcome, Brian.
All right. So the first question would be, you've been doing this camera project for a while, weren't you done yet? We're getting there. So I wanted to just give you an update on where things are at. So this first slide kind of talks about a plan versus a project. So what were the hardware, what we wanted to do? We had a system that was not good. It was really not working well for anyone. In summer of twenty twenty-two, we sat down, we looked at options. We looked at all the vendors out there and things that we could do to improve the system. And then we made a plan. Starting, and I'll go through sort of the timeline on the next slide, but starting in spring of twenty-three, we started getting into each building sequentially, working our way through the district to do upgrades to all the servers, the software on the system that were being used, look at every camera in the district, prioritize for replacements. And that's the hardware piece. And the process piece was really sitting down with people and saying, how are you using this? We walked the building with every administrator, like, you know, where are your shuffle spots? Where do we need to add, what do we need to do? Touch base, and we are constantly working with the SROs to make sure they're comfortable with the system, they know how to use it, because, you know, things come up and they need to be able to use the system well. And improve our documentation and our processes for how this was already in use. Because obviously, you want a system like this to be used well. A lot of times, it's not necessarily catching or doing anything for you in the moment per se, but after the fact, it's an important tool to kind of see, hey, what happened? What was going on here? What can this tell us? So this is just a summary of where we're at in terms of like how we went through each building to replace each piece of the system, what the timeline was, and where it was completed. Everything in green on the left there is listing out the buildings as we went through them and what's done. You'll see, okay, we've got through the building, we're done. No, not quite. We're done with like half of it. So we've replaced about three hundred and eighty cameras at this point, seven hundred and fifty or so that are on the system. That means I've got about three hundred and seventy left that still need to be looked at and replaced. And also, we want to make sure we touch on any areas that we missed the first time around. Because you do this, people are going to come back and say, oh, yeah, we missed a spot. Or this needs to point this way or whatever. So we go through and we look at all those things. So where it says phase two, refresh group one, that's where we're at now. We just finished doing those walkthroughs and getting quotes from the vendor to do that work. And what we basically did, we started over. So Florida says like D O slash Dakota, down through Red Oak. We went through each of those buildings and mapped out every other camera that needed to be replaced. And then we've committed to that work. And the second batch, group two, will be high school. And now, I split it up that way based on like how a lot of people have had the system. Because unless you've lived with it for a little bit, you can't really speak to it very intelligently or with a lot of depth. And also, just because I need to build up our reserves, because a lot of the funding for this is coming from surplus device sales, which is kind of a seasonal thing, you know, each year we get devices back. They're no longer used by the students. We can put those in a pool, we get bids for them, we sell them. So that number on top, over the span of time, that's the surplus revenue that's been generated from selling off iPads and iPhones. That's where all that's coming from. So I'm feeding that back in. Obviously, the original source of that money is capital projects. So I'm, at the end of that device, you're some kind of feeding that money back into a different project. This slide is just kind of giving you a sense of the totals for each building. And you're like, oh, the numbers don't add up. Well, I, I shrunk it down to like the number of the, the specific cameras that we're doing this way now. So there's certain brands, a lot of the older ones, the OnCams, the Samsungs, that, especially the OnCams, we had a bunch of those, they're fine but not great, they need to be replaced. There are a lot of, a lot of the three sixty cameras, watching that. They're not super reliable, so that's one of the reasons we wanted to start at that. But you can get, it's pretty much what you predict, like the high school, over two hundred cameras, right? Big building, so that's what you can see. So that's what that's telling you. This is just a example of, hey, what, you know, SROs on a system or someone else, what do they see? Just that it, one random example of like what the camera reviews look like. Just that it, one random example of, like, what the camera views look like. And then, last thing on here to highlight is just the people that worked on this project, so we had people in buildings and grounds, SROs, tech, um, Sodio, a lot of people in our district were involved, and then, of course, the vendors that we've worked with along the way. As far as building it out, and then, as far as everyday users, you know, every day, especially at the high school, we have people like Melanie here, begging on the security barriers, she's on all the time, SROs, middle school Ds and APs. Those are my power users, uh, obviously, other people use the system. But if you were to ask any of them, like, their impressions, they probably have a good sense of, like, from using it, what to tell you. So, that was my quick recap. Where the counter product is, I'm hoping to any questions or things I didn't, but I'm interested. So, obviously, there's the physical hardware involved, the camera, the device itself. In terms of just the technology footprint, you know, uh, and I'll use the Ring Doorbell as an example. Yeah, I've got, I've got that there, all the surveillance and all the footage is in the cloud, right? So, is, you know, is there ever a vision to say, we're going to use more cloud platform? Or is it better to have, you know, these devices, like, on-prep when you're replacing physical servers and the like? Because of the bandwidth involved, just because the amount of data flowing, it's better, it's, it's just a cleaner operation to have a server on site. Now, that said, when we started putting these servers in place, we kind of over-respect them a little bit. So, right now, um, we have two servers at the high school, server one has my least amount of space left, and it's got a hundred and seventeen days of recording now right now. Every other server has far more than that. It's probably more than we should have, to be honest. That being said, for the life of the system, I'm not worried about space or capacity of the hardware. And there may be a time when we go cloud, but you're not really, it's for that right now, and there's not really a downside to it.
Very good. And then, in terms of, like, the, kind of, sort of the audience that's consuming it, like, uh, can I get camera footage on my cell phone? Is there an app for that, I guess, is the question, or are there designated individuals or spaces for these, this project to use this place?
Um, there, there's, you have to have, like, security access to the system to even log on to it and get to it. So, that's, again, kind of limited to people you'd expect, building habits, people in the security space. For Sodio, S U R access, they want to know if someone's jumping on their computers, things like that. And then, um, you know, we work with Canon as far as, like, okay, if there's a situation where we need to, you know, emergency services or something, so look at something, we can work, work that out, you know, they have a plan for that, so.
And then, the last question, ju- just to, like, tee it off, what it is and what it isn't. And I'll use the twins, uh, as an example, they introduced something new this year for season ticket holders, uh, who opted in to do facial recognition, uh, instead of having to bring a ticket or a phone or whatever, they could literally enter the department. There's no intent now or in the future to enable anything in that facial recognition space with this, this is purely margin, or? Just to have a, on, for our contract.
The quote, not, not that, and it's not something we're leveraging now, although the system has the potential to do sort of a follow me kind of a concept, where it says, hey, um, you identify, like, um, the person wearing the red shirt in the spring. And the system tries to, like, follow across cameras, map that, do that. So, it's not exactly what you're saying, it's more of a, a tool the system has that we eventually could leverage, but the hardware just isn't spec to that right now.
And I'm not making excuses, should it should, it's just more, you know, there's a lot of questions even whether that capability should be used, you know, in a broader scale. But it's all in the name of safety and security, so, you know, whatever, whatever keeps our students safe is the right thing.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, two kind of quick points to Tim's, right? The first one, a lot of the, a lot of video footage has a lot of private student data, right? You know, and so, the same rules we use to save care of that data, really an important part of processes and you do process. And then, the second part, I think the adaptation that we're looking for, like Brian talked about, you can do that manually, you know, by, you know, going camera to camera. So, I think enhancements like that, or something like having to literally time up eleven different cameras to track something, if that can be automated, but that's a far cry from some of the things that, that you're talking about. Definitely, it doesn't want to be on the scope of doing that system.
I have a couple of questions for you. One, um, you talked a lot about buildings, are, are athletic fields covered by these parking lots? I mean, what, how broad or how wide the scope to our cameras capture the properties?
They, you can get about a hundred feet out, and probably from, so like, let's say, well, for an example, like, like a building going out to the parking lot, right? So, like, one of the ads I, that was requested was, um, here again, at Jackson, say, hey, I'd really like a little more coverage of the parking lot. Okay, so, we're going to add one, sort of, by, by its front entrance to kind of get a little further out, just because he would feel like he could. And he's got a, a pretty long sidewalk coming out to his front door from his parking lot, so that, that makes sense. That'll help a bit. Will he see, like, the back of the parking lot, or like, where you first turn in? Not really. But he'll at least see the driveway better and where the drop-off is. So, that's one example. As far as the athletics, one of the, some of the ads that are on the map for this phase, we had two distinct sets of requests for bond. One had to do with, um, sort of, the back gate, so, like, there's a walking track entrance, so, yeah, at least the last one. One of the, one of the things that came up from Q and A was like, oh, they, they have their passes for the walking track, and they would like to have that gate covered better. So, there's a team room that we have to add some wiring to, and that was a bit of a project. Will be part of it to cover that. And then, back of the concessions where they've had, um, we've been borrowing, or the county has been letting, bringing over the, the portable cameras for that. So, we're going to add, we're just going to add some there, like, just sort of as a long-term fix, but, um, you know, if someone identifies a spot over east, we're repositioning stuff, because they're like, hey, our buses park at an angle where the cameras face, we're not getting a good view. Yeah, now, you looked at it for a bit, you can tell me this, so we've got to reposition, things like that.
Well, I just want to say thank you to your team for all the work that's gone into this. Obviously, security in our schools is very important. We are admitted our, our feedback from our community, from the survey that was done back earlier this year. So, this is, this is top of mind for everybody, and I just appreciate us enforcing to make sure that this is done, and our kids, and we give parents peace of mind.
Thanks, everyone. Next on agenda is item eight point six, special election update, and here presents Tiffany Olson, our Director of Communications and Strategic Development.
Thank you, chairs. Members of the board, this will be very brief. Uh, I just want to give you the latest and greatest updates since we last spoke about operational-based items related to the special election. I can take any questions at the end, but again, this is just from an operational management perspective, the latest and greatest of what's going on. There, we've been ensuring folks understand since September nineteenth, there are three ways to vote. You walked by the, the room here in, in previous days, all of the mail, when we receive it, uh, is managed out of that room. And we do have absentee voting that occurs as well. And then, starting on October seventeenth, as we've shared before, direct balloting will be occurring out of that room. And as we all know, in person is at West on November fourth. Uh, you may have seen some information on social media and the website, new this year, this is a Secretary of State component, uh, nothing to do with Scott Comey specifically. Uh, but you can submit an application for your absentee ballot online. And again, that is new this year, that helps expedite the process, we process those every morning, um, comes through the Secretary of State system, and it gets mailed, so it just takes that mailed process out of the application submitted to get your ballot, again, nothing to do with registration. Uh, as a reminder, I know there's been some conversations, and a special election can always be tough for folks to understand, special, general. If you don't hang out and read manuals like I do, that, the terminology isn't necessarily something that you're familiar with, but all precincts, excluding Prior Lake, there's two precincts in Prior Lake, as a reminder, that have to vote at City Hall, and Prior Lake do other items being on the ballot that, uh, they're able to vote on. Vote absentee at this location, or what they submit is processed at this location through November third, and then, as you know, the combined polling place for November fourth. Um, so, again, that can be a confusing message to many of understanding, I'm not going to my town hall, my church, wherever they may normally vote. Uh, we're actually working with the city, we did it in previous years, uh, well, I should say in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we'll be doing it again this year, ensuring those polling places where normal precincts have signage, so that folks are aware, and we're going to see if we can put that signage up earlier than just September third and fourth. Um, we did have our first of two Saturdays this past Saturday, uh, and the one that, um, usually is a little bit more popular, but is also required by the state is November first, and that is our second one. We only have two of that, and that is the same time as what we did this past weekend, nine AM to three. I do want to remind folks, if you're interested in seeing a tabulator, maybe, or, uh, just want to understand the testing process, I really do appreciate how thorough the city is. We provide them with a test deck, and they actually test every single machine, which we have five that are assigned to us. Uh, the one that's in this room will actually get changed out prior to October seventeenth. The only reason it's in there now is if someone needs, uh, support from an ADA perspective to vote. There's some ways that you can do that with a tabulator. All five get tested, but on Wednesday, October eighth, at ten AM at City Hall, not here, they will be testing one in front of the public, so folks can see that. We've already put out our public notice, and you folks approved that on, I believe it was September fifteenth. And that meets all of our requirements for public testing. And we do not do that, but we have every right to interject at any point in the process, since the city is doing it on our behalf. Uh, special election, Jay, uh, the only thing that I wanted to note again, it's similar to September fifteenth, there are a lot of folks that have stepped up. At the end of the day, we have between forty and fifty election judges. And of those is roughly between five to ten head judges that are a part of that process. And you'd be amazed when you ask folks what you'd like to do for your schedule, when you say between five AM and ten PM, and they actually voluntarily check all day. So, there's a lot of folks that really appreciate serving the community and doing that, and I'm appreciative of them. Uh, because I don't know before I've done this, if I would be the one stepping up to do it, but I appreciate it very much now, knowing what they're doing for us. Uh, you'll see I have an action item just to ensure a few other folks that are, will be joining us pass through the board to, to follow resolution guidelines. And then, additional operational milestones, other than the October seventeenth and the direct balloting and our public accuracy testing, uh, you have in front of you the required mail notice of the election, um, which is just laid out just slightly differently, but same content of what you folks approved over the summer, of what the actual notice is when you call the special election, all of that is out. And our public notices are all out there, and then, you can just see there is a public training tomorrow for those that'll be working November fourth, that is just so that we can get those thirty, forty people, I'll be writing that here, familiar with what's going on. I expect cheers when we say we'll be using cold pads, because there was a sigh in two thousand and twenty-one when we said it was paper, so I, I think we'll make some of those folks happy, but we go over logistics and things of that nature, so that when they get there on the fourth, they know right where to go and they hop into action. So, um, other than the canvassing, um, and the unofficial results that'll occur closer to that, there is no other board action items or anything that would be presented other than information in front of you all. So, happy to answer questions.
I have a question. So, like, if a person comes to vote, do they just bring their ID, or do they need the, their ID to vote?
Can you, uh, you say absentee voting or on election day?
On election day or before, somebody can go to the district office, you need to bring their ID.
So, uh, proof of residence is the only thing that's required if you're not registered to vote, otherwise, there's, if it's before November fourth, the form that you fill out asks for your driver's license and last four of your social. You are allowed to provide one, but we don't verify that, because you're registered, and that's verified in the system. So, if you have those numbers handy, I don't actually need to physically bring it unless you're registering, and you can do that here at the same time, as long as you have the proper proof of residence and vote that same day, should you meet those proof of residence requirements, and you can even register on election day as well. Secretary of State allows you to register online through October thirteenth or fourteenth. So, to your point, if you're coming in here, if you know that you're registered and you're firm on that, you actually do not need to bring any sort of ID. We actually legally can't ask for that.
Tiffany, can you share this conversation a little so it's not important?
You know where it is? I think it's in the discussion, the one link lower, I noticed that when I was printing it. I think I put it in the. It's under discussion instead of description, so that's my fault, where I'll move it up, there's two parts in the Word Book. And I think it can put in the lower one.
Inside the item, or?
Yeah, it's a tricky spot, I was trying to trick you all, but I will move it back to the appropriate spot.
Oh, nine point three?
But like, inside the item, or?
I will move it, because again, it's in a different spot, so. Any other questions for anyone?
I just want to thank all the election judges that are, let's say, volunteering the day our campaign. As somebody who has, on several occasions, worked at early in the morning till late at night, you know, you start and you get done. It's a long day, but it's, it's worth it, because it's just what America is.
And it's very, I mean, you have differing parties, it's not one-sided from any aspect, it's folks that all different ages, all different backgrounds, folks that want to come in and support their community, so I echo that. Chair Smith, am I good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Yeah.
Appreciate how you did on this.
Yes.
All right, next up is item eight point seven, initial preparation of budget cuts, and Dr. Redmond will present.
And again, this is, uh, as the title says, this is really kind of the initial budget cut preparation. It's not the actual budget cuts, it's meant to kind of lay out the start of the process, which, uh, later on, there's a slide where I'll kind of allude to some of the things that it does, and maybe, uh, imagine some of the things that it does not. We spent, uh, we spent a fair amount of time in this very room, uh, over the last, I don't know, six months or so, where the anchor spreadsheet has been part of that, and this was trying to, trying to get kind of a scaled-down view of some of the key, uh, you know, financial points in terms of revenue and enrollment and employment, and we're, what we're building as a spreadsheet, or some of that data that is part of that real foundation of, beginning the preparation, should we have to make budget cuts, uh, is coming really from the, the bottom part of this spreadsheet. You'll see that later on. Not going to, you know, we went through some of the actual revenues, um, to have that information again, just thought, uh, good to share and have it in the presentation. We're really going to focus more on the actual expenditures, and I know I've shared, uh, kind of, that one-page document in, in the rap. Uh, there's a link in this presentation, again, I shared the program dimension code. I shared the program dimension codes. So I'm looking, David, I go, I think you are, they have the potential for 17 digits. We're talking about what's called the program dimension, which is kind of the different, you know, the categories that we've used in that anchor spreadsheet and really just looking at the expenditures. Some of the information in there is, boy, it's exactly what you think it would be. And then other stuff, you think, well, it's got to be in the whatever hundreds and it's not. And so, but again, I'm kind of amazed, you know, and, you know, David spent some time answering some questions on that today and except, well, if I was him, I could have just answered all these from memory, you know. But there is some variability even from district to district and so trying to be consistent and make sure that, you know, we could point to the code, which is a really important part of just what we do in terms of our finance and accounting each and every day, not just for, for, you know, preparation of budget cuts. You've seen the presentation a number of times where we talk about the projected $7 to $9 million budget deficit next school year, $1 to $4 million again in '27 and '28, which leaves a range of $8 to $13 million. Didn't think it was appropriate to target, target either end of that and hit kind of, you know, conservative and a little bit higher than the middle for some of the pieces of financial information that we have. So that $11 million, you will see that number repeated on a number of the slides still to come in this presentation, but that is, that is where it comes from. And it is truly an oversimplification of ranges. And I started talking about ranges and then tried to look at, you know, 10 different code areas and all kinds of things and become pretty convoluted pretty quickly. And so, and we talked in the presentations, when, when we look at, you know, where we're, where we're headed potentially, these are the proposed pieces of the solutions to really that $11 million, if you will, for future financial budget deficit challenges. We've got the $3 million in permanent budget cuts to be made prior to next school year and that is irrespective of the operating levy question results. So no matter what. Then we've got kind of the either or nature of question one of the operating levy, which would generate a hair over $5 million in annual revenue or the need to make $5 million in budget cuts if question one were not approved by the voters. For the '27, '28 school year, another half million in budget cuts irrespective of levy voter, voter outcome. And then question two, if question two are not approved, kind of that either or nature, it's approved, it's additional $2.5 million in revenue, if not the need to make $2.5 million in cuts. If you add the three plus the five plus the .5 plus the 2.5, it equals 11. And so that is part of when we, we start to begin to look at making budget cuts, that initial preparation. It does, you know, we tend to focus on what I would call lump sum accounting, where we are, you know, this is, you know, by its nature oversimplified. To adjust from this to other specifics is relatively straightforward, but to try to give a picture with a, hopefully a high degree of clarity and understanding of what, what we're looking at should we have to make, you know, should both levy questions fail and should we have to make $11 million in budget cuts in our school district? And we can certainly extrapolate from that if that total ends up being less than $11 million. But it's that, that is at the focus of this in a what-if nature. This is the beginning of this process. This is absolutely not the presentation of proposed budget cuts. There's a whole bunch of steps along the way. Ultimately, you know, school board approval and then implementation of those budget cuts are the, you know, the final stages, if you will, of that process. But in an effort to, you know, the second bullet there, to provide clarity, to kind of show the magnitude of the budget cuts and also kind of the process for how you begin to look at where and how you may need to cut in terms of which categories or which areas of funding and more, probably more importantly, how much, you know, we're using this and we are, you know, lumping together, you know, all that information from that last slide, which then gets to that $11 million again. The context, two slides from now, there's a table that is built off the anchor spreadsheet. It's been shared previously in this presentation on slide two and before that. Couple of caveats or things that we just know heading into the possibility of budget cuts due to the laws for maintenance of effort, which impacts special services. The budget cuts on the table shared in the next slide are going to be a smaller percentage for special education instruction than the other categories. That is actually a lumps, you know, kind of it's a dollar amount, it was $1 million. That, you know, then equates to roughly 4% where the other categories, other than the 900s, which I'll get to in a second, are at 11%. You know, and that is because we've got laws in terms of maintenance of effort in special education year over year. And then the other is just due to the nature of spending in the 900s codes. It's our property insurance, it's passed through accounts for, for different things. We've counted it as zero. You know, there might be a potential for maybe a small cut here or there, but you know, that is one that just by its nature, there really isn't general fund expenditures of the type that, that you can cut. I expect we're going to, you know, make our loan payments for LTFM bonds. I expect we're going to continue to insure our buildings and things like that. And that, that is, you know, there's other things in that code, but that's kind of at the heart of it. And so to get after this and kind of get to the spreadsheet, I think it's important to really look at a proportional view of expenditures. And again, I'm going to caution all of us and myself that, you know, we're, this is, nothing's been decided, but that is typically the starting place. And so proportional meaning the same percentage of budget cuts applied to each area of the budget. What we're going to show today is just those, that anchor spreadsheet, but you can expand on that, which one of these bullets says as well. This allows very much better understanding of the magnitude of the need in total cuts. It doesn't mean you're going to end up with exactly proportional budget cuts. That guidance directive comes in large part from the school board. There can be adjustments to an individual proportional value in either direction based on a value judgment, legal restrictions, like we just talked about with special services, other factors like the 900s. So there, there is still, you know, the potential for that in different areas or different parts of the budget. A percentage value, which is really from a proportional view where all the categories except the two where we made, made exceptions are 11% of the slides. And it also helps us because not a lot of people who work for us operate, you're probably, David and his staff are probably the only ones who operate with the program dimension code. Other people operate with a department, a building, an area where you could go to them and go, hey, if we do indeed need to make cuts and we're looking at proportional, you might, you know, you're definitely, you may go 11%. You may go, hey, we expect to cut somewhere in the neighborhood of 11% in your area. We want you to actually, we want you to put stuff in priority order through 15% so that if we do move things around or one is, you know, that kind of that value judgment later. But it's really helpful because this sort of foundation transfers, we can make it transfer to other areas that people understand when they're really looking at where they've got great expertise. And so this again, it's an if the budget cuts were proportional, just looking at the codes in the anchor spreadsheet. And you can see, you know, with the exception of the 400s, which is not at 11%, you know, it's a dollar value, you know, so that the following year, you know, we would be within the parameters, I believe, of maintenance of effort. You'll see the zero in the 900s. The other areas are all 11, are all 11% of, of the budget was cut. You can see the original for '26, '27, and then you can see it with budget cuts. And again, you might go, wait, these are over two years? We lumped them all together. In terms of the timing exactly, it's fairly straightforward to go back and go, yes, you're, you're going to do this much in year one, this much in year two, or you, you know, there may be a decision, you know, to, to do something, you know, more in year one as well. And then what it does, it allows us really to extrapolate and answer the two most common questions, which I've been doing in more recent presentations at the building, you know, because we had talked about across, you know, hey, what if the operating levy is not approved by the voters? Talked about, hey, we need to make budget cuts across the district, the programming, staff and things like that. And people really went, well, what does that mean? And so having done this preliminary work and then you can answer these two most common questions, and again, this is an if. It's not a, you know, we just did math. You know, we, you know, if you're cutting proportionally, teachers make up 60% of the operating budget. 60 for, to make 60% of the total cuts in that budget is a range between 70 and 80, 80 full-time teaching positions. Somebody might very quickly do the math and go, hey, that doesn't quite, you know, add up. Well, in teaching, in our areas of teaching, it is primarily the last hired by law or the first that have to be laid off or removed from positions. And so it is a number based on what we believe the average of that 70 to 80 teachers would make. And so, you know, somebody might go, hey, well, 60% of the whole budget was this. If it was, you know, and then you divide it and you end up with an average and, but that's why. There. And then I think people get a sense of what the budget cuts if both levy questions were not approved by the voters. When you tell them, hey, in your area, if it was proportional, it would be 11%, meaning 11% of the people, 11% of the programming, 11% of those things that we're doing in the district. So happy to answer, you know, quick questions on that, but thought, you know, and I think that was even, I think, questions from the board previously as well and trying, you know, and trying to bring forward something that's a little more substantive and at least framing up, should we need to go forward in this manner? It also is part of the, you know, it's the first, first parts of that preparation work.
So on the 70, 80 teaching positions, do you know how many teachers are retiring at the end of the year? And I'm assuming that those positions just would not be...
No.
For the most part?
Yes, for the most part, that would happen. Keep, any, how many retired last year? It's very, very... I'm not saying hi, you're saying five.
We had, a number of years ago, we have actually earned an early retirement supplement on the table. Not very many people took it.
I remember that.
But oddly enough, in the next couple of years, a lot of people retired. So that's why our, our number might normally be around 10, but it's been kind of lower because I think a lot of people left in that window.
And for those of you that have been on the board for a while, you know, sometimes people go, why don't you do the early retirement incentive every year? Well, the idea is you're trying to, you know, possibly get folks who, to retire earlier than they otherwise would and to incentivize that. It didn't work when we did it before. Other districts have done that and had great success. And the thought being that somebody who is higher up on the salary and benefit schedule, if they were to retire, we would replace with a, an employee who is probably less experienced and costs less and those costs, you know, are in, you know, kind of unique situations. And so even, I think it is quite possible that the leadership team, the superintendent, we may come to the board if our voters don't approve the two levy questions and go, is that something we want to consider or do again to try to offer that early retirement incentive?
So eliminating that many teaching positions, what would the classroom count, do you think? Would, how, how many, yeah, I think I do this. How many students per class you think are getting increased?
That's a really complex question.
Yes, I know.
Because it hits high school different than it hits middle school. It's significant and if you, you know, again, we have a range there. This is going to be way oversimplified, but just, and I've thought about that. If you look at the elementary where there's six grade levels, I would say out of the 70 to 80 teaching positions, it, it, you may have somewhere in the range of 30 at the elementary and I think that because it's an easily divisible number with five schools and six grade levels. You would, you know, if it were 30 in the elementary and they were classroom teachers, you would be talking about one teacher at each grade level at each school, you know. And if you have a grade level that is currently five sections with 28 students in a class, one of those teachers, you know, would be laid off in this scenario, meaning each of the other sections would have seven additional students and those sections would go from 28 to 35. And again, that is really oversimplified math, not a, you know, not anything that we've fleshed out. That is one of the pieces as we move forward that we certainly do, but it is, it's significant.
And that is the math I keep remembering.
So it, it was simple. You could kind of do it in your head, which is why I chose it, but I expect more on you.
Very well, Dave. The last thing, the proportional, proportional matter, I think is, is, is good. It doesn't hit anything for one section of the district than anything else. I think it's, it's a wise decision.
And again, I think it's, you know, you have to start from there.
Right.
And then if value judgments lead you other places, having done this multiple times in other school districts earlier in my career, it's, you move something that's above the cut line and say, hey, we don't want to cut it. Well, then what, what below the cut line moves in to take its place? It's, it's not a pleasant experience. And those of you that were here when we went through it before, you know, one of the goals, should we need to do that, is we would want to do that as well as we possibly could with clarity and professionalism and also respect for knowing that it's impacting people that they're currently working hard and doing really good things for kids and our families. So there, there is nothing pleasant about it, but should we have to, I know that we'll take on that responsibility and do it, you know, do it as well as we possibly can.
So this is what we see on the slide right now. This is $11 million. This is assuming both levy questions fail. Going back earlier in the presentation, you've got the, the four, the four different breakdowns of, you know, the $3 million no matter what, $5 million if, if question one fails, $500,000 second year no matter what, and then another 2.5. Have you broken down at all how the cuts will occur in those different scenarios? So say we had, because we're getting $3 million in budget cuts no matter what. So I'm assuming that planning is already occurring because that's going to happen no matter what.
Yep.
And so how, how, how does that look, you know, out of, and I don't think it's speaking up tonight, but out of the 11%, you know, obviously $3 million is not 11%? Not 11%?
Well, we, we have begun that and I think, you know, we've shared a bit with that. You know, we've had the one slide where we talked about, there are a couple of positions that we didn't hire for this year that obviously carry into next year. Where we're looking at, and you'll notice on the $3 million, and I should have said that, when we put that on a slide by itself in the presentations, that will not affect class size, class size targets nor will it affect busing or walking distances. What we're looking at with that first $3 million are things that haven't automatically adjusted and I know our enrollment's running better this year than projected, but if you look at the five previous years, we had declining enrollment. Our class size targets automatically adjust for the most part. That's why we would not look at class size targets. We would look elsewhere and in our system and go, all right, who is serving fewer persons? It could be, you know, people serving primarily other adults in our system. It could be other areas where, yep, these... It could be other areas where, yep, these other things adjusted, your area didn't. The other piece that we're, we've done a lot of work budget-wise really over the last two years is to really understand where our categorical funding, you know, what the revenues are, how they're being spent. And there's a piece there where, you know, to rein those back in and bring those, you know, basically in a, in a couple of situations to go, we, we can't spend more than we get in a categorical area. And so that's really what we've been looking at. We're continuing to meet and work on that. And, you know, the expectation is that we'd, you know, that November 17 meeting and prior to that, you know, we'd be bringing that forward if not then soon, soon after.
Yes. You know, I think I had brought it up in one of the meetings and I've had people ask me, because a lot of the, this community has experienced this. You know, a lot of you were on this board already where we lost X amount of teachers, we lost X amount of programs. Pass it, we get them back. So people were looking for that. But I don't think it's prudent to necessarily name these things until we have to, right? Like come post-Christmas, if this levy fails, names are going to be listed in programs we'll be naming, you know? It'll definitely become real at that time. But I think this serves the goal of understanding literally obvious major changes will have to come, like I do in this.
So that's, that's well said. Now, I'll, I'll add on that. I, I got a question via email a week or a week and a half ago from a, a woman who was a teacher in another district, but lived here and has, has students here and was curious why we couldn't go into that much detail yet. And it occurred to me that, well, the district you're in is already making cuts now because a lot of our surrounding districts are already cutting where we're actually bound, our budget is balanced for this school year. So, so, you know, just going on what Vic said, it's like we, we don't have that detail yet because we're not in that same situation of our nearby districts today.
And I would add, in 2020 and 2021, in our school district, we went, what we did was atypical and extraordinary compared to most school districts. And that was in large part due to things that had happened prior to those years. And at least from my perspective, felt like it was important to really lay out. And even if you remember, we, the board had voted, I think, in July
Yes.
on the budget cuts before, just to go, hey, this is very real, very serious, very important. And, and I think it was the, the previous kind of experiences where a lot of things had been said, hey, trust me, this will happen, that didn't happen. And so that was really an extraordinary effort to do that in terms of time and energy and to try, you know, I, I believe we're in a different place. I believe our, our school board has a high level of trust with the community. We're being clear, we're being transparent. And also I look at us at a system. And we've talked about the huge lift with our math break, you know, it was implemented last year, the comprehensive literacy framework, some of our maximizing time. And we're really, as a school district and as a system, our leadership team, our building principals, and especially our teachers and support staff, we're, we're expending our energy on doing right for students and really working to be better tomorrow than we are today when it comes to learning and teaching. And so those are, you know, there's multiple factors there. But certainly I get the question. I also certainly get that anytime you start talking about budget cuts, we have a team of over 1,000 employees and there is, they're, they're human. And it's like, oh my gosh, I wonder if that includes me. And that is very valid and very real and something that I certainly respect. And that is why, you know, so if it comes to this reality, we will certainly do our best to, to work in a timely manner and be clear and clarity and be humane. When we made the budget cuts previously, one of the expectations that was set was, hey, we talk to people individually and, and, you know, and share those pieces of information. So, yeah, great, great insight, great questions. Thank you.
I have a question. This is, I think I really like this. I mean, this is the number one question that I get from many people that I talk to. It's, well, this will pass, but what's going to happen? And up until this point, it's, it's the, what happened in 2020? What worse? Because the dollar amount is bigger. But one of the things that I've been thinking about, and I spent actually quite a bit of time looking at the codes and David and I had exchanged emails today. I appreciate your feedback. One of the things that I, I'm concerned about is we have the $11 million cut if the levy doesn't pass, levy questions won't pass. Could that number potentially be worse than that based on cuts such as federal and state level? Because I, I look at what some of these codes are, the numbers that are projected to be cut with that 11% across the board. And when you have federal programs that make up probably a big chunk of that particular code, those funds are cut. Obviously, there are, there are programs that, some of them have to offer. Some of them are probably things that we are not required to, like some of the title funds. So that's, that's what, I mean, to me, there's still a lot unknowns. This is not our school district, it's everybody in the state. It's, there's a lot of unknowns with what's going to happen with the feds, what's going to happen with Medicaid and the other funding that we get. I don't have an answer, but I just want to share.
Well, my short answer would be yes. But again, I think for us, when you begin talking about things, and it's why this presentation was framed up the way it is, we have to acknowledge there are always variables, you know, over time. And for us to have a, a clear, transparent conversation, it's why I, you know, the caveats, the 11 million, that it's an if, and if it were proportional, those, it's kind of a fixed proposition in that way so that we can communicate it well and clearly. But absolutely, there are a lot of unusual pieces. And I know you're not talking to shut down, you're talking about what was in the proposed budget for education at the federal level. Certainly, there, there are always factors like that. And that is also partly why when we started, you know, you've got the range of 7 to 9 million and 1 to 4, that, we know there's some variability. You know, there's also, you know, other variability in there. We, we base that off of projections, expectations of enrollment, lots of other pieces. And, you know, so, but we try to hold all that fixed so that we can communicate it well and people can understand it. But knowing that in reality, it is not exactly fixed or permanently fixed. So, good point.
And I just think that this is, this is frustrating, right? And we have to even go down this path to think about. But there are, there's 42 school districts across the state of Minnesota that are, have offered ways of that. We, you know, we're not alone. And I, I really think that these numbers also present a call to action to our state legislators. And I mean, our funding for our public schools is broken in so many ways. And, and there are so many times where they, they try to fix silos, you know, very small components of our funding, some of the categorical stuff, but yet the whole thing needs, needs to be reworked. And I know there are a few years ago, maybe you remember this, Dr. Riven, when there was a task force that was put together on school financing. And from what I understand, it was a great, very smart group of people and came up with some solutions and nothing is done the same. So that's frustrating, especially when you see on the front page of our, you know, little description that there's 98 million in budget cuts in all the school districts around us for this year and next year. And that doesn't probably include our number for next year. So it, it's just very frustrating. I mean, something has to be done. And I, I just would encourage all of us, regardless of the levy passing or not, we have to be active at the Capitol because the more, more voices that are being heard, the more we're going to continue to push. And it's not just for the mothers, it's community owners as well. But I just, it's just frustrating to hear stories from public districts of what's happening with their cuts. And I just, we have to do this here. And it's just kind of devastating.
That's a good point. This potentially, you know, if the levy gets passed, then what questions would be the last time we can fix this?
Right, right, right.
Or you need the state to figure this out?
Very good point.
We're going to do this.
Right.
Hopefully.
Yeah, the next one.
Seems like a good place to stop.
Good time to get into HR.
Thank you, Dr. Riven. Uh, next our agenda is moving into the action item phase of our meeting here. Item 9.1, collective bargaining agreement for the Shopify Education Association, AKA the teacher contract. And here presents Keith Gray, our Bureau Director.
Oh, no. Sorry, I just, before Keith starts talking, I wanted to share something.
Okay. Keith Gray, our Director of Human Resources, but Dr. Riven wants to share something.
Sorry, it was a little quick tapping on the shoulder. And again, I, I don't feel that we need to change the agenda or vote on it. But one of the things that I caught and, you know, I missed earlier is I looked and Keith is highlighting, on Keith's summary earlier, this document said 2% in year one for salary, 2% in year two for salary. As those who are on the, you know, the negotiating team for the board, there is also an additional 0.68, you know, of a percent added to longevity steps 20 through 42. And so that inadvertently wasn't on the, you know, board book when it got published. So I wanted to call that out.
If you refresh it, it shows up.
Yes. But I just, even from, you would have started the meeting without it and now it's there. And that's, that's just because that was an oversight.
Thank you. Welcome, Keith.
Hi. So let me just explain a little bit why, why the Teachers Association had an interest in that. Through the last couple of negotiation rounds, there was a real targeting of positions where we were losing a significant number of teachers. And if you look at the salary schedule, it was a large circle in the middle around the MA areas. And we're having quite a bit of, we're having quite an exodus, people leaving for other districts, making quite a bit more money. So the Teachers Association during those negotiations really highlighted those positions in that circular quadrant. So this group had, had not gotten a lot of increases during that time. Primarily, I think the thinking there in the group was, we're already, we're already the group making a lot, a lot of money comparatively. We're in the lower quadrant, more to the far corner, making a lot of money. But the group this time wanted to do something to help that group, you know, gain some additional traction in terms of payment this round. So that's why we did it. But we did do it only in the second year. So that's the explanation of that piece. It was 2% to 2% then really targeting that group who are in the longevity steps 20 through 42. And then co-curriculars is, is a very similar story. We haven't done co-co-curricular increases for eight years. So the group said we'd really like to do some addition, some additional pay for that group. And those are actually areas where we've been trying to emphasize our activities and our athletics and the growth in those areas. So that was part of the settlement. And then health insurance, our increase this year was 3%. The district is going to increase its contribution by 3%. And next year is unknown. So the, so the group was requesting 8% in year two. The total settlement was 6.53 on the MSBA calculation over the two-year period. So I'd entertain any questions?
I'll just say, I want to thank everybody that participated in the negotiations, not only of the board, but also from the teacher side of things. I thought that this year's negotiations went quite smoothly. It was very collaborative and very appreciative of working together to come to a settlement. I think, I think this is the third contract that I've negotiated. And I think this is the quickest that we've had a settlement since I've been on the board.
Yeah, I've been here for eight years, quickest I've had. Yeah.
So I'm just very appreciative.
Not that we haven't tried, but, you know,
Right.
it's been, it's been difficult, a lot of things our way. So, yeah, it was, I think everybody was happy in relationship to having that settled. Fairly early this year.
Two quick ones here for your kids. So the 6.53%, that is a combined increase in both benefits and salary over the two years, or?
Everything.
Everything, right? So essentially, if you broke down on a yearly basis, it'd be like 3.75, right?
Oh, for, for both committees?
Because it's two years, we're, that's on the standard, if you look at it.
He's asking about the MSBA calculation, what's all in that?
Okay. So the, so the, so the MSP calculation, also the school district calculations is, when we give an increase in salary, for example, it's everything that's included. Like your FICA, our TRA contribution, contribution to workers' comp that's associated with that, life insurance increase that's associated with the increase in support. I mean, everything, you think of everything that's associated with that, that's included in that calculation. Both years, both things. Obviously, benefits don't have a role up really. I mean, you know, what, what we pay for health insurance is what we pay with no additional taxes or anything associated with them.
I just have the anchor sheet like built into my brain here right now, like last year. We talked about it was like about 5.1 or something like that. We went up in benefits and salary and the state's giving us 2.85, something like that. That's where that gap is, right? So that's why I just kind of break down that number, like looking forward, what will be on the anchor spreadsheet in the year from now, we're looking at last year's increase in pay revenue on an annual basis. If that's more in the three and a half, 4% range, or if it's more truly like we're going to see 6.5 on that list, you know?
Well, that 6.5 includes, includes the compounding because your, your one, your one is counted twice, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's go with the same comment because you're paying 2% on the 2%.
Right. So it's not quite an annual, that would be 6.5%. Secondly, just to tie in our previous topic, and you here is like in your team and hiring this year, was there any hesitancy that you noticed or actually had comments of from anybody concerning the potential levy?
No, I mean, no, I don't think anybody was tracking on that. I think everybody, there were a lot of people tracking on, there's a lot of districts cutting. I went to, went to a job fair in the spring and there were a lot of people there that were teachers with experience who were, who were going to, had been notified they were going to be cut. And these are people with like two or three years' experience. So there were a lot more of those folks out there. So there weren't, people weren't tracking really on that than we were looking at some budget, potential budget adjustments. Mostly people are tracking on you are cutting. And, you know, then people stay away from you. And I've noticed that throughout my career. There was a huge job fair at the Convencional Center downtown Minneapolis. And if you were having cuts, you would see a lot of people around you and they would not be making a deal. Yeah. But so people do pay attention to that. I think the universities pay attention to and kind of queue, queue students in.
And I would push, you know, that 98 million on the slide of our comparable districts. That's, they've cut this school year and last school year. Many of them will be cutting again next school year. Some of them are already alluded to the maximum, they're there, they have no other remedy. So that, I, I think, I don't know that it's been a big factor, but I know we have had folks who are pretty darn good, who happen to be really low on the seniority list in some of those districts who've applied for positions in our district over the last couple of years. And again, I, that point earlier, this budget situation, you know, it's not a shock to people. There are many, many districts across the state facing the same thing. And you've heard me talk about the state funding not keeping pace with inflation probably over 100 times. I mean, that was a, I'll save it.
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Sh芭 education association.
I'll second you.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Aldridge. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next up is, uh, item nine point two, baseball field trip. This was on the agenda at the last meeting. Um, three weeks ago, it was part of the consent agenda and we had pulled it out due to a, a question from constituent, uh, concerned, uh, parent about their, uh, involvement of their child in, uh, the baseball field trip. And, uh, Board Member Johnson presented, uh, the communication with the, the members. We decided to pull it out and get some more information. Um, we, uh, since gotten that information, it was presented in, uh, the rap a week ago, right? Um, uh, you know, two Fridays ago. So, Dr. Ruben, would you like to add anything to that?
No, um, just clarify what the rules are, which was in the rap and it was, you know, the, there's an opportunity for, uh, baseball student athletes to go on a trip to a former place. Uh, if they choose not to go on that trip, there are practices held, uh, over those same dates here in Sh芭. And, you know, the expectation would be that a student athlete on the baseball program would, you know, attend practice either on the trip or, uh, here on site over, over the dates of that trip as, as they're scheduled. Uh, and that somehow, you know, and, and not, not sure what, what caused the, the challenges in communication, but we asked that question, uh, multiple times, multiple different ways. What are the rules? And, uh, those were the rules of the expectation, you know, an absence to, both of those, meaning you didn't go on the trip and you didn't attend the practice at the local site for practice, uh, would be treated just like an absence any other time, you know, for a student athlete participating in baseball. Shared that in the rap.
Did I clarify?
I'd say it's, I'm glad that it was brought up in the meeting. You know, it's sad that it kind of disappointing that it had to be brought up in the meeting here to get that fleshed out, but, um, definitely wouldn't want to, uh, punish any students for that mistake. So I think it's good that they're here to go on this trip and that there's options for everybody now.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip.
Second. A motion by Aldridge and a second by Brophy. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is another action, item nine point three, special election staffing final additions. And Tiffany will present.
Mr. Smith, I'll present from over here to, this should be sixty seconds or less. Uh, just in front of you, the attachment that you see is an additional resolution to what you approved on September fifteenth, which is a few names added. Uh, we have additional on the ballot board and then on election day. The terms and everything else is completely the same. We don't have the previous names approved because this would be in addition to that. Um, and again, this just provides by the Secretary of State's guidelines in appointing anyone to support our elections. So I would ask for the, the board's approval, if possible, for these final additions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Valdez and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is item nine point four, school board meeting calendar for 2026. And Dr. Ruben will present.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I, I know we just did a, a vote. Was that a resolution or was that, I see reference to resolution in the attachment, but it's, it's not a resolution that requires a vote call. Is that correct?
I think it does require a vote call. It says resolution.
That's, that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you fast enough.
Hi, I appreciate the clarification on that. Shall we do a, a resolution vote call?
Just for the sake of due diligence or?
That technically, when you do the all in favor, that would cover that resolution because the original was approved with all names, but we're here. Let's just go around and be consistent with the.
Cover it. We'll, we'll make sure it's, it's going to be a double, double approved, assuming resolution happens. Uh, so we're back on item nine point three. Uh, we're voting it as a resolution. Tiffany, can you please do your roll?
Uh, Sidik?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aldridge?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brophy? Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you. All right, now on to nine point four, uh, school board meeting calendar, and Dr. Ruben will present.
Yeah, we've shared this before. This is, um, pretty much kind of taking the 2025 calendar and replicating it, uh, for the 2026 kind of equivalent dates. Had discussion around one date and, um, and did reach total consensus, but went back to the more typical date for that. Other than that, um, it's all pretty straightforward and certainly asks the, uh, the board to approve.
Well, we need to add on here at this time, the canvas signal collection results next November.
Um, we typically have added that knowing, yeah, if, if we were to, for some reason, add an election, we typically added that after.
Because we will have one lucky, so we'll be for the school board.
Oh, thank you. Great point. We certainly could add that. Um.
We can add it later. I just.
Yeah, no, yeah. No, that didn't cross my mind. Yeah, typically we've done that during the year, but yeah, we certainly could have for next year.
We can add it because we gotta, we gotta submit all the question this time here so we can do it.
Do we know what that date would be?
Well, election date November third. So you could do it like, uh, if we do it like we did now, it'd be November eleventh, came to the November eleventh. Um, so either probably the tenth or the twelfth, twelfth. Twelve is theirs, theirs, yeah. Which I guess will be.
That's something we know.
Typically not.
We have that four or four.
We have the four.
Just four.
So we could have Thursday, November twelve, six P M. Next year if you want.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed calendar with the addition of the, uh, watching canvassing date on November twelve, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Uh, so a motion by Smith and a second by Brophy. Any discussion?
I still like a couple of the dates. You know what I have realized in life? It's not all about me. So.
Took that long, dude. Any further discussion?
Yes.
See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries six, zero. Uh, next on our agenda is item ten, committee reports and other information. Uh, Tim, so you.
Yeah, very good. I got to participate in the grant opening women's cutting ceremony for the Jackson Commons. Very well-attended event. We do have to wait a couple of years for that to translate into enrollment because there are a lot of littles there. Enjoying the new park. Um, and just a shout out to all of the work done with the city and the Jac, uh, Jackson Township to make that come to fruition. And so like they kind of worked through some, some details. Um, and if you're feeling really adventurous, go ride your bike at the Skills Park. Um, yep. Uh, and then since I brought up biking, uh, next weekend in Mankato is the state championship for the mountain bike that will wrap it up. So, uh, it came and went fast. Uh, and if you have nothing better to do, come watch these student athletes, uh, perform an effort. It's, it's quite something to do with. But that's all I have.
Kim?
I don't, can I have anything? Because we haven't had community engagement in a while. And, um, it was before the last meeting that we had, um, uh, policy committee, so I don't have anything.
I'd like to apologize to David and everybody else in the finance committee that I don't know how to read calendars, which is really sad because I'm really good at the calendar. I completely found out when I showed up here that we had a meeting today and I found out we were talking about a cash flow statement that David and I had talked about a few weeks ago. And that frankly would have been the greatest meeting of all time. So it's, and as somebody who's put together those, I, I feel horrible. I'll stop.
It was the greatest.
It was really good.
Honestly, it was a good time. I was like, where's Joel when we're talking about this?
Yeah, I would have probably, I would have been too excited to come to this meeting, actually. It would have been the, the best. But I do apologize to everybody for missing that. Um, so I don't have anything else. Uh, because I've just had a mess lately, it appears.
All right, um, let's see, a finance facility community meeting tonight. So once again, great, uh, great cash flow presentation.
That just hurts.
See, uh, Caroline and I attended the, uh, the high school conferences and presented on the levy there. Uh, I attended the E S P T O and presented levy there and also attended the, uh, the Red Oak, uh, picnic and talked about the levy there. So, uh, been talking a lot about, about the levy and, and it's been good. Um, just, just to get the information out. So, um, and it's a great, Kristen?
Uh, yeah, I heard the same thing. Been a lot of talking to people, a lot of, uh, conversations been had. Um, so it's good to get the information out there and the education people get questions answered. Um, one thing I want to bring up, Southwest Metro, I just want to bring this to your attention. Um, you've probably heard a lot about H one B side issue with the executive order that was passed down, uh, that significantly impacts Southwest Metro. Um, spent a lot of time on the phone, making contact with them for your time that, that Saturday. Um, we get teachers in transit when that, um, executive order went into effect. And so, you know, it was, um, concerned that they wouldn't get here and how we're going to handle that, but everything turned out fine. But the challenge is right now, what does that look like for the future? And we rely on international teachers quite a bit there, you know, because of special education. Um, there are teachers that are defined and they've been doing a great job for us. I think we have forty international teachers in Southwest Metro right now. So, um, it's a program that is working well. I know there are other school districts in the state, I think Fridley is one of them that utilizes that program as well. You know, Rock Ridge is another place in the process of also getting, um, international teachers in this happen. So, um, there, we have reached out to all of our congressional members in Washington, D C. And I know there have been some meetings that have been scheduled for, I think they do later this week, um, that are joining us. And like, can, um, to try to bring a, an issue to the board, run and see what we can really get, kind of, um, critical people that we rely on for services, nurses, doctors, teachers, kind of cut out of that through the exemption. Um, so we can continue to provide services for our kids. So hopefully we can have some good conversations there. Uh, and then, um, as part of a presentation, the scale, um, at Big Four, which is, we did Minnesota cities, counties, townships, and then school, um, school board and school districts. And we talked a lot about how we collaborate as a county, uh, with all of our entities, um, and how it's working really well. And, um, so it was a really, it was a good presentation. Um, had a lot of great questions and I was there just as a, was there any way for MSBA, but, um, represented school districts and Scott County. And then just MSBA board meeting last weekend, um, delegate assembly and right around the corner, you should all have received an email to vote on the delegates. So please make sure that you vote for delegates. Um, we have six of them in our director district thirteen. So, um, I'll make sure that you get some good representation there. Um, there are right now approximately fifty-seven resolutions that have been brought forward that the MSBA board reviewed for the first time at our board meeting and retrieved left. So even though it's an off year, policy year, we typically don't see as many. There's a lot. So, um, I will leave it at that. It's a whole lot more to say, but it's, it's late.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Um, Ms. Echowood, Jeff said I was at the, uh, high school conferences, um, talking about the levy. So I'm going to do the TLC on Thursday. So I'll be there talking about the levy. Um, we have a community engagement on the twentieth of October. So, vote it.
Trying to get a little more organized and keep the track stuff here. I should say something about that. Um, it's harder looking back and I was at the meeting with Joe's empty seat with the finance facilities, nothing earlier. Um, looking forward, the district advisory council's coming up here on the thirteenth. If you know, tune that. And, um, all three of these committees, I think, are all looking for more members in the community if anyone wants to go and have a voice. That one, um, the community head council, we meet on the fourteenth. I don't need to get to have a good time talking about like your Italian cooking classes and stuff like that. You get a hundred dollar allowance into the community head classes. And the special head advisory council is back. I just got invited to be to that October fourteenth also. So scheduling kind of picked the button right here out. Um, and also this month is just literacy awareness month. And so you'll see a lot of social media posts and things like that going on from our family. And our goal is always just to hopefully find one here, one family or one parent that helps, helps with that. So, thank you. Shana?
Ryan and I met the, Mr. Pollocky and Ms. Redford, um, earlier, oh, it was last, last week.
Yeah.
Um, talking about those services and, um, but the conversation was started last year in terms of how can we ensure English learning students are, are aware of advanced classes and advanced class opportunities, not only just aware, but they have classes to take in people's or take a C I F class and there's enough teacher support, you know, great goes for it to help them get into those classes. The conversation was started last year and so it was really good to start talking to students and getting this, like, we're getting about next steps and why, um, isn't it different for students in terms of collecting feedback from teachers and other students? Um, we're meeting with Good Trouble officially this Wednesday. Um, so that's me, Ryan, and there's another student and another senior at this, at the high school, made up of your results. We're involved in several different activities. Um, so we're kind of a Sh芭 team. So we will be looking at higher level qualitative feedback this year. Um, I, I can answer the Jackson Commons opening. I was not, I was working on college applications. Um, my sister, she did make it to the middle school or she is part of the middle school cast. Um, it's not a musical, it's a play. She keeps correcting me. But I have written scripts and I'm excited to watch it. The performance is the number seven, eight, nine. So that time I'll be, I'm, I'm just been telling them, watching numbers. So it's, she has a lot of friends and she knows.
Ryan?
Well, Shana already kind of went over all the big meetings that we kind of have together with Good Trouble and the one that we had with Mr. Pollocky and Ms. Redford. But besides that, I had an amazing homecoming. At the game, I got flowered really badly. I was like, I looked like the Pillsbury Doughboy. But homecoming day was really good. I hung out with a lot of my friends. I actually went with them. Um, yeah, we just had fun and I don't know, we were good that day. Um, but more of my week this Wednesday, I'm going to a college fair for Abbott as a field trip. So I could, I could skip the whole day to be at the National College Fair at the Minnesota Community Center. So something new, excited for that. But more personally, I just want to share that I'm applying for the United States Youth Center Program, which in short, it's, um, two delegates from each state get to go to, and get to go to Washington, D C. All expenses paid, but the one caveat to it is you have to be in a position of governance, which is perfect for me. But, um, I'm just trying to really show my dedication and my passion through the essays and the video. But I'm just trying to really show my dedication and my passion through the essays and the video interview that I have. So, yeah, I'll like.
Jim?
I will not bring up the facilities in the finance committee meeting.
I really appreciate that.
Which was riveting. No, no, no. No, it's, it's amazing how we're moving along. We're in mid-quarter, we're at fall break. Fall sports are starting to, to head into the playoffs already. So, you know, I, I tie that back to the, you know, the elementary, you know, component, and we already have students in win time, and we're making growth and progress with our, with our newest learners. And so lots going on, it's amazing how quickly a year moves, and we are to the first real milestone, which is, which is fall break.
Tiffany, anyone else?
I know it's coming up on item eleven, but I just want to remind folks that there's a lot of great events coming up this week, and it all seems to be jammed on the ninth as well. There's a wake-up Shockabeet that's being hosted at the high school, and we also have a signing event for Graystone. And if you want to stick around and get some hot dogs with the ninth grade team, they'll be outside when school ends for the ninth grade tailgate as well. And then we have Sweeney conferences in East, so open up, talk with anyone if they're interested in attending East and appreciate those, they'll be at Sweeney and others that we have coming up. But that's all I have, Chair Smith.
I'll go there and add, there is a student school board event coming up on October twenty-ninth in Hartington, at the Hartington Middle School. They had to move it from high school to middle school because of elections being held in Hartington. Supposedly they can't have the event at high school because of that, that state's polling race or something, I don't know. Anyway, but if you need more information, it is an MSBA-sponsored event, so let me know, it's on their website. Yeah, I was totally forgot about it, so, yeah, it's in Hartington this year.
Thank you. David, anything else you want to share?
No, I don't, I don't think I have anything to share. I'll show you my cash flow. I'm very excited.
Thank you. Dr. Robyn, last word.
I've shared enough, and I think everything else has been said. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. So item eleven, as Tiffany mentioned, upcoming meetings and important dates. Scroll down there and put those up on the screen, but, yeah, we've got a lot going on, it's packed October. And thank you for Tiffany, for Tiffany for highlighting a few things, but, yeah, a lot of events coming up. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Brophy, any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any adjourn?